The Personnel Subcommittee and Committee of the whole meeting to honor Nancy Rollcall.
Mr. Chair?
Present.
Uh, Ms. Gately? Ms. Gately? I saw her.
She's, she's here. She needs to get off of mute.
Mr. Satterwhite?
I'm here. Lorraine?
Yep, and observing is Mr. Ford and Mr. Nicholson.
Okay, um, the, on the agenda is the Director for the Lynn Public School Welcoming Center posting. Think we all got a copy of it and with some corrections on it maybe? Dr. Tuckwire, would you like to speak to that?
Certainly. Uh, so what you was, what you received is a, um, a- a- as you know, the, the process typically flows. We have a conversation about a posting. You make recommendations, uh, we put something together and then, uh, if the position belongs to, uh, a union, administrative union or what have you, uh, the next, the next and usually last stop is them, uh, for their final approval. Uh, this has taken on a slightly different, uh, order of operations, which is okay. Uh, but, uh, what you have or what you received is, um, their, uh, updates or changes, uh, to the posting. I would say in large part, um, nothing they've added or taken away is in conflict with what you, uh, were looking for in this posting. I'd say point out just a couple of things. Um, the bachelor's degree, which I actually advocated for, and I seem to be that there was some, um, interest or sentiment among the, the committee to also strike that given, um, you know, sort of the scope of the position and its base salary. Uh, I'm fine letting that go. Uh, and then the, the rest of it, uh, are some slight additions in terms of, um, role and responsibility, um, that, you know, are not earth shattering, um, and, uh, the removal of one responsibility as it relates to, uh, scheduling, uh, language testing. I think by and large, um, this captures, you know, in my view, uh, the, the core of what this uh, position is about, what we're seeing it evolving to. I think it also captures in large part more, uh, feedback. Um, I think I would say separate and apart from the, the actual posting, uh, I want the committee to know, uh, that I am, uh, both committed and excited about this being, uh, an open and, uh, participatory process. Uh, I've already connected with two, uh, community agencies, uh, North Shore Labor Council. It's gonna help me find, uh, some community members and parents to participate on this, uh, committee and, um, I haven't talked much about this, but I will, uh, in a later meeting. I've been having conversations with, uh, Latinos for Education, uh, and while they may not necessarily participate in the, um, in this process and on the committee, um, they do have a, um, uh, posting outlet, uh, that we intend to take full advantage of. Uh, and so we see this again, as I mentioned in the last meeting, as a really exciting opportunity. Uh, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you have about the changes, uh, or any feedback yet.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Michael?
Thank you. Uh, paragraph 12, um, under the responsibilities of, uh, Dr. Tuckwire, um, it says that the, the monitors the daily operation as well as annual, um, annually conducts training with support of other directors as needed, English learner education, nursing and special education. Is it, is it explicitly just for those, um, directors or can it include others?
It can, i- it can include other. Historically, at least as of late, um, it has been, uh, it has been in relation to or relation with those directors because there's, um, you know, really integral parts of the registration process that link, uh, to those departments, but it doesn't need to be limited to them. And I don't think that even, I don't think that, that, that the posting would limit, you know, the people that this person would partner with or could potentially partner with to provide professional development.
And obviously this individual is already working underneath the Director of Social Emotional Learning. That's why that's not listed there, correct?
Sure.
Okay. I'm fine with, um, with it and, and the terms of employment, that was removed? Is that removed because the days below that, as it spelled out?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there were any other questions? There's no other questions? Is there?
We have one question, uh.
Okay, I'm sorry. I can't see it.
It's Lorraine.
Okay, Lorraine, yeah, sorry.
Okay, um, Dr. Tuckwire, on number 10, do you have it in front of you?
I do.
Okay, so applicant should have knowledge of Microsoft Office products. Is that on there now?
Yes.
Um, I thought we were moving away from Microsoft?
Well, Microsoft Office products are Microsoft Power Point, Excel. That's okay. Were you able to hear me?
All right, so I'm gonna go with Google. People are still gonna be up to Google. That's what I'm asking. I'm nervous. I can't just be, uh, Microsoft. Sorry about the dog. Somebody's walking by on those people. Sorry. All right, and, um, number 20?
Yep.
While staying in the framework of the voluntary desegregation plan, that's included now?
Yes.
Okay. All my questions.
Is there any answer to that Microsoft part?
Yes. Uh, all that, all that ma- that is not, uh, in any way designed to exclude Google or any other products. Um, it's saying at a minimum, the Microsoft Office products of, you know, Word, Excel, PowerPoint, we're expecting at a minimum. And frankly, if you know those, then you would know, uh, those, you know, the Google products that offer the same capability.
Even the Apple ones?
I didn't even know Apple had them.
They have very similar ones.
Don, I think John has a question.
Yes, John. I'm sorry. I have a low system voltage tonight and so as, if there's too many people open, you know, not muted, if you're talking over each other and then I can't, um, e- everything just blocks out.
Got a quick, quick question. Uh, closing date, is that important on our application right now?
Yeah, we, typically, and, um, Tim and Deb can keep me honest here, with this union, it's, uh, 30 days. If you left it blank, uh, or should be blank, uh, because it depends on the date that it gets posted, but we would go 30 days out from there.
There's question marks there because we, it hasn't been approved yet. Can I make a motion, Donna?
Yes, love to have that.
I got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Jared. I'm sorry.
That's good. Thank you so much. Um, so on the, given the change about the education credentials, I just wanted to ask, now that, uh, we are making that, now that if that would be required as opposed to preferred, I, 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 I was, I hadn't focused as much on the, the specific degrees because it was preferred or commensurate experience, but if it's gonna be required, that means that the, the, the degree has to be in those two specific fields. Um, in other words, if you had sort of a MBA in, in nonprofit management or, or, you know, some, some, some other kind of masters that, that people thought would be, uh, potentially relevant, you wouldn't be able to apply. Um, so I was, my question is, was that intentional to, to limit it to those two programs? Um, and, you know, are there, are there programs that would be similar that may be called different things? Um, particularly around the, the, the higher education credentials. You know, I think this is a really community facing position and ideally, I think it'd be great if we had somebody who had experience with the community or from, came from the community and as we all, all know, there are sometimes barriers to higher education to getting, uh, multiple degrees. Um, and so I wanted to, to, to ask about that.
Yep. So, um, it, it, I'm gonna make a guess here, um, and, and I will, uh, confirm this with, um, the, the union president. Uh, but I, I, I believe it was the latter half of that, um, statement, um, after the word preferred, uh, that was, that was concerning. Uh, I'm gonna need to circle back to them and, and, and check on that, but, um, because I agree with you. You want to limit it just to those two degrees. They would be preferred, um, but, but certainly not, uh, y- you know, barriers for other viable applicants who have a master's degree.
And I think Patrick, uh, sorry, Dr. Tuckwire, the reason why you added those was because that was discussed at the last meeting, those specific ones, but I agree with Jared that we shouldn't just limit it to, to those. Fair enough. Fair enough. Um, but, but I think that we should at least, uh, you know, I don't think someone with a business degree should be in this position. You know what I mean? So that, that's where.
And they should have a master's degree and most of our teachers in our district have masters plus 15, 45, 16 degrees.
But what, what areas are, are we comfortable with adding?
But that's what we discussed, social work and our counseling and we can add preferred. I don't know why it was taken out. But I just want to make sure that, that Jared, you know that we have personnel that have all these degrees that could do this job and be a beautiful face for the, uh, welcoming center.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, and I hope they apply. I think, I think that when, when you go through, we're starting to hire for a new position, you want broadest field as possible and, and, uh, I think there's probably people in the system that would have great masters degrees that aren't in those specific programs that would, we would also want to see apply.
Jared, do you have any, any specific one? Do you want to add?
Um, I mean, one way to do it would be to say that those, with the programs that were preferred, um, as opposed to listing them all. Um, but yeah.
Add preferred.
Yeah. Um, wh- what about if we broaden it up, Patrick, like, um, a master's in, in social and behavioral sciences or public administration and services, something like that, where it's not specific just, uh, to, to possibly the school? It could be a, a broader, um, uh, field.
I mean, that's, that's possible, but I, I don't know that that, uh, less, I mean, you still, you still get the same, for lack of a better expression, bang for your buck as you do with the current language. Um, you know, it's in a social science field that, that is preferred, a master's degree, but it doesn't mean that, you know, anyone else with a master's degree would be excluded. Um, but it, you know, it's, I personally think it's fine like this, but it's a.
I, I understand what you're saying. Social work, i- i- it all depends on who's interpreting it. I, I understand. Uh, because social work, you're right, it could be the, the social behavioral science, um.
Why not just say our related field? Social work, counseling, our related field, for example, psychology.
I don't mind adding that. So it'd be a master's degree in social work, counseling or related field from an accredited college/university, end of sentence.
Preferred.
I, I wouldn't even put preferred.
We didn't limit it to just those.
You have to put preferred.
I, I think when you add other related, that, that, you know, it gets to the, to the gist of it, but we can put preferred, that's fine. I think that the union has gonna have a problem with it because it's preferred.
Uh, we, we, we can, we'll, we'll get them over that, huh?
Motion to, uh, approve the job posting, Donna, um, for, uh, Lynn's Public Schools Welcome Center with the following changes to, um, what used to be former paragraph two, which is now paragraph one, where it says master's degree in social work, counseling or related field from an accredited college/university preferred, all outs, uh, to stay the same as presented to us, uh, in the email.
Second. Okay, Roll, Rollcall Nancy?
I'm new.
Nancy, uh.
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
And Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
Is that recommended to the full committee?
And it's recommended to the full committee.
Thank you.
And just, I'm gonna help, which I'm glad for, to be part of the screening committee and, um, I was just, because we don't have a screening committee in particular written for the administrative, but were you intending to use the one that, um, is screening committee and the principal director?
Um, I think I missed the last part of the, I didn't ask you.
We got an email from, about the screening committees for principals and, and Donna's inquiring as if that is gonna be applicable here for this position.
I, I mean, I.
It's actually, I'm carrying my host on this one. Sorry, I, I've lost you, Lo.
No, that's okay. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Yep.
John?
John, my host, hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be, it's broken up. I can't, what was the question?
The screening committee for principals, uh, and, and directors, she wants to know if that's applicable to this position.
Not applicable, but my understanding is the superintendent is gonna utilize that as his form to put this thing together. My discussions with him.
That's, that was my only question. Thank you. A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we can go right into policy. So I would like to call to you to order the policy subcommittee meeting and a committee of the whole meeting. Uh, Rollcall, please.
Mr. Ford? Mr. Ford?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
Chair and Mr. Satterwhite?
Present.
Great. Uh, so welcome, everybody. This is a, in part continuation of the overhaul of the policy manual that we had started, uh, months ago, months prior to the pandemic, uh, and then also in part some, some more pressing up updates, um. But, uh, just to remind everybody, we were updating the policy over, uh, policy manual, uh, because we found that it was, uh, had been dated. We had gone through A and part of B, uh, and I just wanna thank Dorothy Presser who's joined us and, as well as, uh, uh, Attorney Gallo who's here tonight, uh, and, and Mary Jewels who's been working with them, uh, for all the work that you guys have done recently. Uh, we, we are tonight skipping from B to J, uh, because there were some, uh, pressing changes in the policy manual in a couple areas that we will, uh, ask Attorney Gallo to speak to, uh, in, in a moment, um, around the bullying policy and the Title IX discrimination policy that the, this, that, that, the state and federal law requires, uh, and, uh, Attorney Gallo used that opportunity to work with Dorothy Presser, who's gonna be taking us through this section of the policy manual anyway. Um, so you have received their suggested changes and, uh, as always, th- th- this is the, um, prerogative of the committee to make the, to make the actual approvals and so these are recommendations and, uh, we'll have every opportunity this evening to get people's input and, uh, questions. Um, the, uh, I do, I also want to just note that, because we're talking about section J, that this is the, includes the, the student conduct and, and, and discipline, uh, section of the policy manual, which intersects with a goal that we've been talking about for, for a couple years now around sort of rethinking school discipline, uh, addressing the school to prison pipeline, things like that, and, and I know issues that have come up, uh, as well this summer and, and a lot of some of the feedback we got from, from students, uh, and alumni about their experiences in the, in a public school system. And, and I want to point out that as we look at this, these sections, uh, that, that, that effort is ongoing. I know, I, I did talk to Dr. Tuckwire about that and that's conversations he's having with the, um, leadership in the schools, with students, uh, we'll be getting feedback more formally through the inclusivity panels. And so just wanted to highlight that, um, that is, is, is on track and, and Dr. Tuckwire is, is really, uh, pushing that effort along, um, in case people were, were, were wondering about how that intersects with what we're doing tonight. Um, so, uh, and, and, and he, and he mentioned that he thought those, some of those changes would be ready for the next handbook and iteration for the 2021, 22 school year, um, for those, for, 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 for that, uh, track of changes. But for the C thing, like I said, we have, uh, the MASC recommendations on, on J and we also have the, the recommendations that Attorney Gallo has brought to us. Um, before I turn it, turn it over to, to, uh, Dorothy Presser and Attorney Gallo, and does anybody have any kind of questions of where we are, what we're doing?
I just have a comment.
Yeah.
I want to thank, uh, thank Dr. Tuckwire and Attorney Gallo and the whole team for just, uh, taking time to, to, to utilize our student voice, uh, to utilize the, the, the recommendation of the consultant. I know this is a lot of work to do. Um, very heavy task, as you can see. Um, thank you guys for all the hard work and everyone that, uh, in the district that has had a hand in this. Um, it is a lot and we really, uh, this is well overdue and well needed, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castellanos. Great, so I will turn it over to, uh, Ms. Presser and Attorney Gallo to start the presentation.
Attorney Gallo, would you like to start or, because I know there was priority on a couple policies that were really in, a little bit more in your bailiwick than my bailiwick.
Absolutely. So, so I'll go ahead and do that and, and, um, thank you for, for the opportunity for Dorothy, uh, Ms. Presser and I to present tonight and, uh, along with acknowledging, uh, Mary Jewels, um, her partnership on this. We've had guidance from senior administration. There's been some input from principals. Uh, Sheila O'Neal from the Teachers Union has had some input with respect to the discipline code. Um, and I, I'd be remiss not to acknowledge Mr. Nicholson as well for sort of connecting us all, uh, in this, so. Um, you do have a big packet. Mr. Castellanos is correct on that, but we're gonna try to make that pretty easy for you to digest tonight and I'm gonna do a, a screen share to help us with that. Um, the first sort of pressing policy to think about is the bullying policy and I'm gonna share, if I can, hopefully you all can see the, uh, packet up there. Yes. And so I would suggest that we look at page 131 of this packet. And this is on page 131, the bullying policy current marked up with proposed revisions. What's happening here is that the bullying policy in LPS was adopted in about 2015 after a change of law in 2014 and there were some defects in the way that it was adopted. I was on the policy subcommittee at that time, so this is sort of a moment of, of, uh, repent for me and, and asking you to fix the, the change, the, uh, defects. But the defects are in the definition section and if you continue on, and I'm gonna do so on the screen here, um, the definition section starts on page 143. And what you'll notice is that the definition section in the LPS existing policy departs from the definition that the statute has. And in particular, where that departure is problematic is in the definition, definition of bullying itself and it does not cover bullying by a staff member. Desi, as luck would have it during the COVID period, has been reviewing policies around the state for bullying compliance and flagged ours for having this issue. So I've been working with Dorothy, with Mary and with Desi to clean up these definition sections and in particular here, including bullying, covering bullying that's done by a staff member. And so the other cleanups are mostly typographical in nature and grammatical in nature. Um, but the major fixes here are the definition section, starting on page 143, particularly as to staff. Um, and, and, um, my, my hope is that we will be able to, to consider this for adoption, um, to, to avoid frankly being cited, um, you know, for having a policy that's been out of compliance. And I don't know if Dorothy or Mary or, or anyone else has thoughts on that, but that's, um, sort of what I have on the bullying policy.
No, I really don't have anything to add. Um, Attorney Gallo's review of the policy was pretty thorough. Um, and certainly, you know, we worked together to make sure everything seemed in line and it looks to me like it's ready to go.
Any, any questions on the bullying policy? I think, uh, with, with, with the screen share, we won't be able to see everybody's hand at once, so speak up if you have a question or use the chat, I guess.
I, I have a question.
Please.
Um, uh, Ms., uh, Attorney Gallo, um, w- within, uh, this, this policy change, aside from the definitions, um, o- o- one part looked like it was pretty important that was removed and that has to do with developing a plan to provide annual professional development?
Correct. Um, so, so that, there were other, so thank you Attorney Satterwhite for the question. That's a good catch. This policy was adopted right around the time the statute was adopted shortly thereafter. And so it was written in a sort of future tense, here's what we're going to do. And so working with Dorothy, we've sort of taken out those, here's what we're going to do's and, and included in the policy is what we are doing. So the things that looked in 2015 like we're gonna do, they are already being done. And, um, I want to be, make a point that Desi had no issue in terms of compliance with our practices. It was, it was the document itself.
Okay. Again, m- more so on the policy side as opposed to the procedure?
Exactly. Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Any other questions? Or comments on the bullying policy? Great. I think you can go to the next section, Attorney Gallo. Thank you, Attorney Nicholson. So, um, the bullying policy that we just went over, uh, appears both in the district handbook that's updated annually as well as in the larger policy manual, which is why Dorothy, uh, Ms. Presser and I are, are collaborating on it. The same can be said for the Title IX harassment and nondiscrimination policies. They appear in both. Um, Title IX harassment and nondiscrimination, there's been some changes in law recently along those lines that require some changes to our policy documents. And this is an, another that we're sort of in the, I hope you'll consider and, and adopt, you know, in the near future category so that we're able to comply with changes in law. Um, this is pretty heavy, but I want you to know that it's been drafted in consultation with senior leadership. Uh, Attorney Myhost has received a copy of this, um, input with, with, um, Ms. Presser and Mass Association of School Committees, also input with Mary Jewels. Um, we have participated in Mass Association of Superintendents Zooms about this issue, read through memos, um, that they've put out and also corporate, our, our district council has looked at it. So there's been a lot of review of these policies before it's gotten to you. I want to preface it, and we continue on page 200 and continue on page 201. For the opportunity, in review, in revising these for updates in law, to ensure that we're prohibiting consistently discrimination or harassment of any kind to align with your values and the district's values. Um, if you look at the top of page 201 of your PDF here, harassment, page 28 is the handbook page, just for my reference. Um, but you can see that I've crossed out some language. And the reason I've crossed that out is because the existing harassment and discrimination policies don't prohibit harassment, for example, on the basis of skin color, ethnicity, ancestry, English language proficiency. And, and I'll tell you as a Linner, I'm proud of some of the steps that you've taken, the secure and safe, safe and secure schools, um, policy, the Black Lives Matter, um, um, policy, those kinds of things. And consistent with all of that, we've taken this opportunity to include a more broad prohibition and you'll see this language repeated that includes virtually every protected. prohibition, and you'll see this language repeated, that includes virtually every protected class there. So that's a preface here. Then going to the changes themselves, I would fast forward to page 228 of this document, and the first changes that are occurring in law have to do with procedures, and there's lots of them. In August, there were a bunch of federal government procedures that were released in terms of how do you deal with a Title IX investigation? That's an investigation around sexual harassment. And so from page 228, going on down, you'll see all of that procedural stuff listed, and I'm not going to delve too deeply into it unless you want me to, but I just again want to reiterate, this has been through the hands of several, to sort of make sure our procedures are in compliance with new law, and also there's a form basically to fill out to a complaint. And I see Attorney Satterwhite's hand up.
My worry, and obviously I'm going to rely heavily on the people that made this decision, is utilizing the SEL Executive Director for this particular role. It's a fairly new role in the district, and it seems to be, it's going to be a lot of work. Was there a reason why we picked that person?
So that's sort of the second change that's occurring here, is that the federal law wants us to prominently identify an individual to receive complaints, and they're not the only team member on the Title IX team, they're one, there's going to be an investigator, there's going to be a decision maker. But in discussing it with senior administration, the thinking was that a potential victim of sexual harassment, that might be kind of a comfortable place for them to make their complaint. And so that, I think, and Dr. Tutwiler can sort of, you know, either expand or correct me on that, but I think that that was the thinking that was going on with senior administration in why Carolyn Troy would be selected.
Nothing more to add, if I may, but Carolyn Troy is a trained clinician, very knowledgeable around issues of privacy, very knowledgeable in many areas related to these issues, it just seemed like the natural fit.
Thank you.
And so that was really the second major change here, is the importance of identifying a Title IX coordinator. That's going to be kind of the coordinator, the captain of the team, if you will. Once this is adopted, or hopefully after this is adopted, the next step is going to be forming the larger team who's going to deal with Title IX investigations, if there are any. And then finally, those individuals are going to be trained, and that's something that's going to happen next. So I'm just giving you a preview of kind of internally the steps that are kind of underway in accordance with these new changes in law. The next section I would point out is around definitions, and that is page 233. The new Title IX rules at the federal level include a number of definitions, and you can see those, I'm scrolling through on the screen now, but you can see those definitions sections, and those are for the most part taken right out of the statute, and those are required to be part of the policy, so that's why those are there. And then the last thing I would sort of point out is down on page 238, the changes in Title IX require schools to determine, and for those of you attorneys, standard of evidence by which Title IX investigation should occur. The federal government's going to give you two options, and one of those options is the clear and convincing evidence standard, which is almost certainly this happened. The second option is the preponderance of evidence option, which is more likely than not this harassment occurred. And I'll tell you that every high school and college in this area is choosing the latter, because we want people to know they can come forward and, you know, if they have an allegation, go through that process. And so, you know, thinking about the values that the district has and you all have, on page 38, we're making that preponderance of the evidence selection there in accordance with the new law. Those are the highlights, many, many hours went into this, and if Dorothy, Ms. Presser, you have anything to add, you know, I want to sort of refer to you if you do, but those are sort of the highlights that I would present on these issues.
Sure, thanks. Just a couple of things, I know when we first met and started going through the policy manual, I talked to you a little bit about severing policy and procedure, but that's not always the case, and in this case, it makes sense to keep all the procedure right in the policy. So sometimes that's why policies get many, many pages long and very detailed, but in this case, it makes total sense. The other thing, just to give some thought to, when we started with A, there actually was a harassment policy in Section A that we've already looked at, this is going to supersede that, and it would be wise probably to code this and put it in both places, to give it the A code, which is foundations of basic commitments, and then also to have it in J, which is the student section.
Great, thank you both. Do any of the members have any questions? I see Attorney Satterwhite.
I'm sorry, so maybe Attorney Gallo can help with this, but the appeals process seems very light. Is this something that was just standard in other school districts and colleges?
It's pretty standard for what's being adopted now, yes, so that most of the investigation happens initially, and there is, I agree with you, a pretty light appeals process, but you do have to designate, and we will designate, you know, through senior administration, a sort of final decision maker, who's going to be that last line of appeals. So that's again part of our team, and that individual will hopefully join in that training that Carolyn will be in, and I'll be in as well, just as sort of a partial drafter of this.
And when I see the word bias or conflict of interest, a party may appeal the decision, I'm assuming that's based off of the person that is doing the investigation. Are we going to have definitions of what bias, conflict of interest, or newly discovered evidence, or any of that stuff within the document, just so no one can?
I can talk to, let me do some thinking on that, it's not something that's come up yet, but I think it's something that may be worthwhile to think about. Maybe it's not in this document, but maybe as part, I'm certain that as part of the training that's going to come up, so I'm thinking maybe that will be within the training materials and kind of live there, which the district is, by the way, has to publish the training materials, so I'm thinking maybe that's the place to house them, as long as that makes sense with you.
Who does the training?
So probably it will be through the district council, which is the Sankey Law Firm, and they're doing these kinds of trainings for other districts as well.
And as compliance officer, you're making sure that the district is holding to these documents in these policies?
Correct, and I'm going to be in that training, and if there ever is a complaint, I'll certainly be at the table for those reasons.
Okay, thank you.
So, I can go on to next, and that's sort of the final, before I turn over to Ms. Presser, unless there are other questions or thoughts so far, or if Attorney Nicholson, you want me to take a different route? Yes, I did have a question on this section, but I wanted to see if anyone else had any questions on the harassment section, any other questions there? My question, Attorney Gallo, for this policy, we have, it starts with the harassment policy, and then the second half is the Title IX sexual harassment policy. Both define sexual harassment, can you talk a little bit about how those definitions are going to fit together? Great question. Title IX is a narrower sexual harassment definition. Title IX does not include sexual harassment, for example, that happens in another country. So if there's a school field trip, and there's sexual harassment on that field trip, we can't deal with that under sort of the provisions of Title IX. And so we have a broader harassment policy, so we can deal with harassment that occurs outside of Title IX. So maybe they're in a different location, or maybe it's not sexual harassment in nature, maybe it's harassment based on creed or ethnicity or English language proficiency. So that's why you have two different policies, so there's some overlap, but also some separation. Okay, all right, that makes sense. And any other questions on this section?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
On the Title IX coordinator.
Yep.
Who covered the position of Title IX coordinator? Like, under what job description? Not the person, just the job description.
Who, and I'm sorry, Ms. Capone, you, I think either my computer or yours cut out, but were you asking who has the current position?
Yes, under what job did that before, right?
Yeah, so previously, that was under the director of personnel or HR, and so I think, you know, going back to the earlier question, the thinking was we want to do somebody who maybe has some training and expertise in areas of sort of, you know, the sort of social emotional issues that Dr. Tutwiler was talking about, so I think that that was the reason for the potential shift. Also, that there's not really an incumbent person, you know, the person who's in that position right now is probably, well, the HR director, there's an interim HR director, and so we do need to, you know, name somebody. And so I think that this is something you could always change in the future if you wanted to, but that was probably the thinking behind naming Carolyn Miss Troy. All right, any other questions on the harassment policy?
Just a quick thing that I noticed, I go to the JFK building quite often, and know that it's not 475 Government Center.
Oh.
Can you just double check, because I know it's 15 New Sudbury Street, and it's Room 475 in Government Center, Boston, Mass, and the rest is right, so I want to make sure that the people have the right offices.
I stand corrected, and here's my post-it note for the morning Attorney Satterwhite.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Attorney Satterwhite. Any other comments on this policy? So before we go to the next batch, my understanding is that these were changes that were legally required, that we want to make sure we got done tonight. I think we have a huge stack of papers in front of us with some important recommendations for the rest of that, but it's up to the will of the committee, my colleagues, Attorney Satterwhite and Mr. Ford, but it may make sense for us to put a motion in now, if people are okay with these, to send to the full committee, and before we start going through the rest of the changes.
I agree, Jared, we should make a motion to submit these to the full committee.
Great.
And I'm making that motion.
Thank you, all right. And just for the record, that's the bullying policy and the harassment nondiscrimination policies, Title IX harassment nondiscrimination policy, to go to the full committee.
Yes, that's correct.
Make that motion.
Attorney Satterwhite did.
Okay.
And we'll need a second.
Second.
Great, roll call, please.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, all right, so back to Attorney Gallo and Ms. Presser. Sure, and Ms. Presser, would you like to go through the manual, and then I can chime in when we get to the discipline code proper, or would you like me to start with the discipline code proper and then turn over to you?
Hmm, that's a good question. You want to start with the discipline code, you're on a roll, why don't you?
Certainly, why not, right? All right, so, again, I'm doing the screen share function, hopefully you can all see, and if you have your PDF at home, it's the page 162, which is the discipline code. The discipline code appears both in the school handbook that's updated annually, as well as in the larger policy manual. So again, this is an area where there's room for collaboration with the Mass Association of School Committees. There are significant overlap sections between the existing discipline code in the handbook and the policy manual, and I'll just give you a couple of examples. You have the, let's see, attendance section, there are attendance definitions, and attendance sort of, you know, misbehaviors in the discipline code, and then there's a policy document, a larger policy document that talks about attendance rules. There is a provision further down in the discipline code here that prevents hazing, for example, and that hazing prohibition is included in the larger policy manual as well, so those are just kind of examples of the overlap. So, that's sort of big picture, and getting into more detail, there were some issues that exist with our existing discipline code that I've noticed in this position. One of them is confusion about which law applies under which, you know, which discipline matter. Another is that there needs to be some updating in language and updating in terms of, you know, things that children do now and didn't do when this was adopted. I'll give you one, and that's vaping. There's no prohibition on vaping in the existing discipline code, so that's something that we want to modernize. And in addition to that, there is an issue around sort of less than assault and battery type harm that happens to our staff, and Sheila O'Neil is on this call, and I want to acknowledge her, and she and I worked together a little bit on that issue to include some language here that deals with those kinds of issues. So, first change is that every section now of the discipline code, I have inserted a statutory reference, so you can see in number one, the reference is Chapter 71, 37H and 3/4. If we go down to, you know, section, let's see. If we go down to the assault and battery section, it's 37H. Why is that important? Well, 37H and 3/4 is about handbook violations, not, most violations are handbook violations, violating the discipline code, violating the dress code, violating the cell phone policy. And if you are found to violate 37H and 3/4, a handbook violation, you have a five-day appeal right if you're disciplined. 37H and 1/2 is the next statute, and that governs felonies. If a student is charged with a felony or convicted of a felony, that similarly has an appeal right of five days. And then there's 37H, which deals with assault and battery on staff, guns, knives, and drugs. And just to make things confusing, there's a 10-day appeal right with that statute. So you have 37H and 3/4, 37H and 1/2, and 37H, and they have different appeal rights. And so the question I get sometimes from principals is, am I operating under the correct statute? And sometimes they're not initially, and I help them through that, but there are also sometimes that they're, you know, that help is not successful, and there have been at least one misstep where a student was given the wrong appeal right, five days instead of 10 days, and it was rectified, but, you know, we want to avoid that. So by including these statutory references, what we're doing is we're helping our disciplinarians follow the correct laws, and we're also protecting the rights of our students. So that's the first change. The second change comes under protecting teachers and staff. Assault and battery, there's in law a fear element that goes with assault, and so the idea is that you have to be put in fear to be assaulted, and the statute talks about assault and battery, but doesn't really cover what happens if it's less than assault and battery, and I'll give you some examples. You know, hypothetically, a student throws something at a teacher. Hypothetically, a student shoulder brushes a teacher. These are offenses that are probably less than assault and battery. And what's happened is that other districts have recognized that, and they have included policies that prohibit endangering staff or harming staff in those ways. Boston has a provision in their discipline code against endangering physical safety or emotional health. Hingham has one about inappropriate physical contact. Lowell has one about any contact that might endanger a staff member. And so- And so I want to be clear that there's not been an uptick in these issues or anything. This is more something we're doing as a preventative measure. But working a little bit with the L T U, with Sheila, and also with with senior administration here, we have for your consideration a new 6.9, very similar to Boston language, endangering physical safety, mental, emotional health of a school department employee, staff, or pupil. That's a handbook violation, as opposed to a violation under 37 H. And, you know, if these kinds of things happen, principals do sometimes struggle to to discipline. This doesn't need to be adopted tonight, but it's here for your consideration. The next sort of change is the updating of policy, excuse me, of the discipline code for the current times. And I can best illustrate that by bringing you down to Section 11. And Section 11, I've inserted some language that talks about vaping. The previous version or the existing version of the discipline code includes the word smoking. It actually includes it under the arson section for some reason, but includes the word smoking. And so we thought this was an area we should update for the times. And there are a couple of other tweaks like that, but this is one that probably is easy to explain and and kind of illustrate the approach. And then the final set of changes that we're making in the discipline code or proposing have to do with organization and grammar. And I'll give you a little bit of a laugh now, hopefully I'll test my comedic skill here. But the existing discipline code has a category of misbehavior called fire extinguisher. Fire extinguisher is a noun, a person, place, or thing. You cannot be in trouble for being a fire extinguisher. So we have inserted inappropriate use of a fire extinguisher. There's another one that simply says fire, again, a noun. Setting a fire would be the more appropriate thing. And so there are updates and tweaks in those areas as well. And then finally, the existing discipline code has the Section 2, which is entitled "School Incidents", and then it has a Section 4, which is entitled "Other School Incidents". Don't know why, but we're thinking that probably school incidents and other school incidents can be combined, and that's for organizational flow. So I can't thank Ms. Presser and and Mary Jewels enough for their input on this, and I would defer to them if they have anything on it. But those are sort of highlights of the changes to the discipline code. Again, this appears both in the district handbook and the larger policy manual.
Attorney Gallo, I think one other thing you might need to give yourself credit for is putting in the policy references
Oh.
within the discipline code so that it was easier to coordinate between the policy and the discipline code.
That's a great, so that's something that that we worked on together, and I'll give you a great example of that, 1.3 here. The current discipline code includes some disciplinary offenses around attendance that don't really conform to the policy that you guys adopted last year. And so rather than spell out, you know, the problems with the discipline with attendance in the the discipline code, we should refer instead to the policy document so that you don't have to, every time you tweak a policy document, go back and also tweak the discipline code. So this is, you know, trying to make a more flexible document, and and thank you, Ms. Presser, for pointing it out. And that was something that we worked on a lot together during the COVID period.
Attorney Gallo, I see Attorney Saturday has a question. Yeah, what what then we'll see if Ms. Presser has anything else to add, but Attorney Saturday, please go ahead.
Um, I I thought that they were done with this particular session, and one of my questions had to do with the definition of terms. Would that be something that Ms. Pressler or Charlie, Attorney Gallo, sorry?
No, that's fine. We've known each other a long time, Attorney Saturday.
Here, page 169, the definitions of of terms.
Yep, I got it up for you.
So when we're removing the lunch detention, does that mean that we're no longer, is that is that not something that the a principal or someone that is enforcing a punishment on a student can 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 do?
So what we did was because there are various kinds of detention, and the existing discipline code talked about in in different areas, you know, for this offense, you're going to get lunch detention, for this offense, you're going to get Saturday detention, whatever the case may be. What we did instead was we referred to in each section detention of every any kind. And so an all-encompassing, and and that's a great example, Attorney Saturday, because maybe one day there's not going to be a Saturday detention, and maybe one day there's going to be a Sunday detention or, you know, whatever. So so again, allowing for a more flexible document that's not.
Detention.
Yep. Detention of any kind.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And confiscation, what what does that mean we're not going to take any illegal objects from students?
Yeah, you can't really do confiscation as a disciplinary. So you might do it, but it's not a punishment.
Okay, obviously, if it's if it's illegal or something that they shouldn't have, normally they give it to the teacher or I mean, the parent, they don't keep it. We don't, we don't, we don't have a have a a place where we sell stuff that we confiscate, like the the police department. So, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And just the student appearance, my worry with this is we don't give any leeway for any type of religion, it looks like, or just culture. Did this not change at all, the student appearance?
So I have not touched student appearance. My changes have been more, you know, like I said, updating and compliance. And so this is something I think that that the school committee may look at, and and Ms. Presser certainly, I know, has had this on her mind as well.
Okay.
Not a, yeah.
Yes, I have very definitely had that on my mind.
Perfect, thank you, yeah.
So Ms. Presser, did you have anything to add to the presentation on the discipline code? This is in J I C, right?
Yes, no, I think Attorney Gallo has been, I think I've added my little piece. It was, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with Attorney Gallo and Ms. Jewels on this. We worked, we worked very well collaboratively. And, you know, I think we managed, we did a really good job of balancing out the policy and the discipline code and really going through everything thoroughly to make sure that we did deal with a lot of the issues that Attorney Gallo talked about. So and I think he covered everything that we studied and discussed and debated during the course of the summer pretty well.
Great, thank you. Other questions about the discipline code? And you have to speak up, because I can't see everybody at the same time, please. Okay, wait, did I? Ms. Gailey?
I would just like to thank both of you for doing such a great job on this, and Mary Jewels, because she's not on this picture, I mean, online. And Jared, thank you very much for going over this. And now I understand H R, one half, H R, three fourths, I get it, or just H. I'm getting it, but I'm not a lawyer, so thank you all very much.
Great. So I I have a couple of questions I had to run through, but I want to I want to see if anybody else added questions about the discipline code. Okay, so yeah, I mean, and I would echo what my colleagues have said in gratitude to the team, Attorney Gallo, Ms. Presser, Ms. Jewels, everybody that's involved in this. This is a ton of work, and we really appreciate it. Some of my questions are a little bit more, maybe more more long-term, because I think, you know, I I think we've all taken heart some of what we've heard about people's experiences in 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 dealing with some of these issues, and it's something that is a priority for the district that we're working through. But because we have it in in front of us right now, I wanted to to ask a couple of questions. So so one was starting from the beginning of the discipline, discipline code in Section 1. You know, in the in that first sentence there, when we say, any of these things may result in the following, there's obviously a wide range of severity, right? So we're saying parent conference all the way up to a CRA. And you look at that list, a failure to report to homeroom, that's not going to result in a in a CRA, right? There's going to be a lot of input and feedback and intervention, and hopefully that would never happen, right? Can you speak a little bit to why we have it structured like that? And if you've seen districts that have, are able to communicate that range of severity differently, so it wouldn't read as if failure to report to homeroom could lead to a CRA?
Mm-hmm, so I think that it's a it's a great question, and and the approach, I think, is to try to make it a pretty straightforward document. So, you know, may lead, not will lead, and those kinds of distinctions. But I think it's more about the culture in the district and understanding that you're not going to, you know, go to the most severe punishment for the sort of, you know, entry-level offense. And so, you know, certainly the the district could look at further separating it out. I did not, and and with Ms. Presser did not endeavor to to go that far. But certainly, that could be something to look at. It would mean that you'd have more than, you know, the the 11 or 12 sections of discipline, probably. You'd separate it out further. I will say what is common in other districts is the idea that you separate out by statute, and that was something that was missing in Lynn, and and that's something that this draft addresses.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, and I have a similar question for the next one, you know, the the next one says may lead up to notice to law enforcement and includes things like, you know, cheating, not meeting their behavioral standards of class. You know, they're not going to call the police if somebody doesn't meet the behavioral standards of, you know, if someone and I think that's important, that the district has that value of treating school issues, not as criminal justice issues. And 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 reading that policy sort of, do we have in here at some point the the a clear statement of when we when we would call the law enforcement, like, because reading this now, it looks like you could call law enforcement for any one of these?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it's discretionary, but I want to point to this line that I added in, support, prevention, and similar measures are used in the Lynn Public Schools in addition to the discipline code. So we're opening with sort of our values around this, that it's not just discipline, and it's not just throwing the book at the student, we're also trying to use these other other avenues. So so maybe there's a way to make that more prominently listed. But that was something, frankly, that was missing in the existing discipline code as well, that approach.
Got it, okay. And then the the change that you had mentioned about endangering the the physical safety, I I totally understand and appreciate that we need to take care of our employees, and and I appreciate you and the T G Union if you, I'm I'm honestly, I'm curious as to to to, you know, I know you and I talked about this, Attorney Gallo, curious to what my, what others think from the administration, from my colleagues. I I I wonder if there's any concern if that, you know, similar conduct, any kind of endangering of mental health. You know, depending on how you define mental health, it could could be perceived fairly broadly, right? And therefore creating a discipline issue when you really have a behavioral issue on a student that's really sort of an unmet need, as Dr. Tutwiler likes to say. Any any sort of thought on on how how to how to balance those priorities?
So this language is pretty close to the Boston language, although I'll say that Boston is a little bit more wordy than we are, frankly. But the endangering in any way is the Boston language. We tried to strike a balance. I'll tell you, there was another one that I looked at, which was Hingham, that I thought was too broad. Hingham was inappropriate physical conduct. Well, who determines inappropriate? So this at least, endangering is some kind of a standard. But I think it would be within the purview of the school committee and the district for sure to tweak this language. This is a starting point, and it doesn't have to be the place we land, and and I certainly won't be offended if if we tweak that.
Great, so I'm just flipping through my my notes here. And now this is more of a sort of a clarification. The the section on felonies, this is this is meant to apply to any felony, no matter where it occurs, right?
Correct, so the 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 rule on felonies is that if a student is charged with a felony and the principal determines that the student's continued presence in school would have a substantial detrimental effect on the the welfare of the school, they can suspend the student even though the felony occurred outside of the school. And if the student is convicted of a felony, that student can be suspended indefinitely, and they would receive tutoring and services, but suspended indefinitely if that conviction, they think, would have a substantial detrimental effect on the school. Let's say traditional learning environment. God forbid, our student is involved, a student of ours is involved in in an altercation where someone's severely injured or is killed. Not that that's happened, or or that we're hoping, or we're thinking that that's going to happen, but just hypothetically. Let's say that occurs, that felony might have a detrimental effect on the welfare of the school, because the other kids in the classroom might be fearful. And so the idea is that even though that felony occurred not in the school, and maybe not even in the city of Lynn, that there would be some provision there that you could either expend, suspend, or exclude that student for that reason. And that's 37 H and 1/2 is the statute that goes through those those reasons.
Okay, okay.
Jared, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
My understanding is, we usually remove them from day school, but they're, we're still required to educate them. So we've put them in the night school, so, you know, what's the difference?
That's exactly right, Ms. Capola. So we still have to provide for that student's education, and so it might be night school, or it might be tutoring, whatever the case may be.
Okay, because our night school does not, you know, consist, mo- most of our children in night school are not there because they have a felon.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
The rest against them. So it it kind of concerns me that we have that, you know, that they would exclude them from the school, school, but we're putting them in a night school where there are many, many kids that don't have felonies.
And and I think it's more, I think that that, you know, when those cases come up, I know that that Dr. Tutwiler and senior administration work pretty closely to find an appropriate placement, and those decisions are made in a very careful way.
So just to clarify, not being in day school does not mean night school is the only other alternative. You would, the the education does need to be provided, but how that education, it doesn't, you know, it could be, it could be a collaborative and out-of-district placement, it could be tutoring, it could be a lot of different things. But you're right that the education still needs to be provided.
Can I just chime in really quickly that, just to clarify? We weigh every case very carefully and try to think about safety first and foremost, and then meeting that student's educational needs. More often than not, for example, if the student attends classical and there's any sort of disciplinary issue that rises to this level, we usually will place them at English. And, you know, again, it depends on that student's needs, the safety concerns, lots of different factors go into that decision. It is not, you know, as simple as, you know, there's there's a a discipline issue on this level, and you're going to night school. Much more thoughtful than that.
Thank you. Another question I had, sorry, I skipped over this one earlier, in 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 Section 2 of the discipline code, the the similar to the point you made, Attorney Gallo, about the Hingham policy in terms of like, what, who determines what is inappropriate? So that one of the items that can lead to detention up to notice of law enforcement is unauthorized demonstration. You know, how how are we defining unauthorized in that sense, if we necessarily say at school, you know, particularly given the some of the activity that that I think a lot of us are proud of and see as positive with regard to to demonstrations?
So some sometimes a little bit confusing with the strike-throughs and the underlines, and I apologize for that. But the the discipline code, if we start, students are subject to the discipline code in school buildings, on school property, on the way from school. So it's limited, it's not, you know, the student was part of an unlawful demonstration, you know, sort of in New Hampshire, and they're going to be disciplined in the Lynn Public Schools. So there are parameters that exist there. That provision, Attorney Nicholson, that you're pointing out is a probate in the current policy. So that would be another one that would be within the purview of the school committee potentially to discuss changing. But what what I'm thinking is unauthorized demonstration, maybe it's students blocking the entrance to the school building, for example. That's what I would think about when I read that provision.
Got it, okay. Um, all right, we are, we are closing in on seven o'clock, which is the, the end of the time for this, uh, subcommittee meeting. Does, does any, does any other members have any, uh, thoughts they wanna share? And this is, yeah, obviously, we only got through a fraction of this packet, um, and so we need to schedule, uh, another subcommittee meeting very, very soon to continue to work our way through, because we not only have, uh, the rest of J, but then CDEFG up to, up to L, or whatever it goes to. Uh, and we, we had, as everyone knows, paused this effort, given with everything that's happening with the pandemic, but, uh, clearly are ready to make progress so that we can finish this project, uh, in, in, in due time. Um, but is it, does anyone else have any, uh, thoughts?
Could I just add one quick, uh, thought too? That the policies that we looked at in J were the ones that were specifically related to the discipline code. This is definitely not all of section J.
Okay, thank you. And there were policies that we had in, in that were sent to us, some of which are referenced here, like the, um, you know, the attendance, the, um, attendance policies, the absent, the excuses, the, uh, address code, the, you know, all these other policies that we didn't get to, um, but yeah, so that, that, there's a lot for us to do.
And, and Jared, um, that, one of the things that, um, I, I saw that I, obviously as being a special education attorney, that you, 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 we're, we're changing the language now, it's not just special education, it's a special, I, I think they're using the word eligible. So, um, tha- that's like a question I wanna know, like, at what point? Like, prior to the incident, or can they be eligible for special education, uh, treatments thereafter? And, and the, the punishments won't be applicable? Like, I, I have, I have a, a lot of questions with regards to that section, but we don't have time, so.
Excellent. That's a, that's a great question, and we'll, we'll pick that up in the, in the next, uh, episode.
To be continued. Uh, so we made that one motion, um, and it's already going to the full committee, right?
No, not yet. Who made the motion?
Uh, it was the earlier motion, ma'am. Thank you, you got the, for, for all the presenters and to everybody, um, I think we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
No motion made on that?
Uh, no, 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 just the ones we already made, so now there's a motion to adjourn. If, if Mr. Ford was second, we'll call it.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Getting adjourned, on time.
Good work by the subcommittees. Uh, good discussion. Uh, we're, um, ready to go into the full committee meeting, and, uh, so I'd like to welcome everyone to the fifteenth regular meeting of the Lynn School Committee. And as a preliminary matter, we'd like to confirm attendance. Uh, Nan, could you please confirm all the members of the committee and the persons that are anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear us?
Mr. Capola?
Present.
Mr. Capola?
Present.
Mr. Ford?
Present.
Mr. Sadek?
Present.
Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
Mr. Sadaway?
Present.
Nan McGee?
Present.
Okay, perfect.
And then, could you also identify those that are gonna be on, anticipated as part of the agenda as well? Nan, please.
Superintendent Tawler, um, Mr. McHale, uh, Powers, um, Miss, um, um, Attorney Myhouse, um, Mary Jo.
Present.
Did I miss anybody? Kevin Maggiario?
Present.
Hi, everybody.
The Q.
Okay.
Present.
Okay, great, thank you, Kevin. Um, so we're ready to go in, and again, this is me, Tom McGee, and I'd like to say good evening to everyone, and thank you for joining us. Uh, this open meeting of the Lynn School Committee is being conducted remotely, uh, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency of the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-nineteen, the COVID-nineteen virus, and advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a public, a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, is on the city website. It allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded to the public, who can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lynn School Department is convening by telephone conference, video conference via the Zoom platform, which has been posted on the city's website and on the Lynn Public School website. Additionally, this meeting can be viewed on local cable channels, channel three for Comcast, channel thirty-seven for Verizon. Note that this meeting is being recorded, and that some attendees are participating, participating by video conference. Accordingly, please, please be aware that other people may be able to see you, and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are now turning, uh, to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business, and to, to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As the chairman, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will get on the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions, uh, and hold, please hold until your name is called. Also, remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes, please. For any response, wait for, until the chair yields the floor to you, and start, state your name before speaking, or the chair will identify you by name. Members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, and again, care to identify yourselves as you're, uh, speaking. Finally, each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by a roll call. With that, uh, I ask that everyone join me, and I know Don Hussey, uh, has a flag available in the meeting room, so that we stand and salute the United, the flag of the United States of America. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask that you stay standing and join me in a moment of silence, uh, for George Wa- George Dunn, a former custodian who passed away on September twenty-sixth of twenty twenty. Thank you. First on the agenda is minutes from several meetings, and, uh, would like to, uh, take those up, and, uh, looking for a motion to, uh, uh, both accept and pass the, uh, uh, the minutes, uh, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to, uh, pass the minutes of A, B, C, D, and E.
I can. Uh, motions were made, and, and, uh, as, as those, thank you, uh, Member Ford, uh, and I'll just read what those minutes are. A is the tenth special meeting and executive session on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. B is the eleventh special meeting and executive session on September third of twenty twenty. C is the thirteenth special meeting and executive session on September tenth of twenty twenty. D is personnel subcommittee meeting on September twenty-fourth of twenty twenty. And E is the fourteenth regular meeting and executive session, uh, on September twenty-fourth of twenty twenty. There's been a motion to accept those minutes, is there a second?
There was a second.
Second.
There's, there's a second, and it requires a roll call.
Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadaway?
Yes.
And Nan McGee?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is, um, uh, appointments and elections, and Matthew Quiatek, uh, P, P clan technician. Uh, Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to speak to that, please?
Indeed, I will. Uh, Matthew Quiatek has joined, uh, a, a, a very busy, uh, team of IT folk. Uh, and, uh, I, I didn't see his name, uh, in the list of participants this evening, but if he's watching, uh, welcome aboard, uh, we, we, we need you, and, uh, we're off to the races. I hear wonderful things about him, uh, and we're, we're, we're excited to welcome him aboard.
Great, thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, and Matthew, welcome aboard, and look forward to, uh, your good work that'll be coming as you join us. Thank you very much. Um, next on the agenda is new business and recognition of a high school student, uh, Jael Bito, uh, Beddo. Uh, would you like to speak to that, Dr. Tutwiler, please, and?
I, I, I.
And I see he's with us here, welcome.
I cannot wait to.
He's right here to join us, so we're, we're glad to have you with us tonight.
Thank you.
Look at, uh, well, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Uh, that is a face, uh, that should, uh, be very familiar to everybody on this call, and everybody who's watching, um, the, uh, committee meeting tonight. Uh, so i- if I may, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say some words about you. Um, you know, typically, student recognition, uh, in this space has traditionally come in the form of the annual MAS superintendents award, or the Laudner awards in the spring. Uh, typically, we'll have, uh, the NJ, MCJRC, uh, come to be recognized. Uh, but to date, uh, I have not proposed an individual student for recognition in this space, as recognition typically happens at the, uh, at the school level. Uh, I'm breaking with that tradition for the first time, and I think for a very good reason. Uh, I'd like to recognize, uh, Jael. Uh, the entire school district owes this young man a great deal of gratitude. I haven't had the pleasure of formally meeting him, uh, until this evening, uh, but I, along with thousands of Lynn Public Schools families, have gotten to know him through the support videos he's created in partnership with, uh, Afton Dean, a classical high school teacher. I had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Dean yesterday, uh, first to express my deep, deep appreciation for all that she's doing, uh, in creating these extremely helpful videos. Uh, and during that conversation, I also had an opportunity to learn a little bit about this young man. Uh, and I would say he is every bit as genuine as he comes across in the videos, uh, that he's created. At present, uh, if you go look, there are twenty video tutorials in the technology support tab. Two zero, twenty, ten in English and ten in Spanish. Each video provides families with simple step-by-step instructions on everything from logging in to uploading assignments, to tailoring one's school, schoolage account, uh, to his or her liking. Uh, I don't know the number of hours, and I, I, I might like to ask him this, uh, that have gone into creating and editing his videos, uh, but I'm sure that the number is not small. I think for me, the thing that really speaks to who this young man is, uh, comes in his response, uh, to being asked to do this work. Uh, Ms. Dean tells me that when she asked him, uh, and I quote, his response was, "I would be grateful for the opportunity." Uh, "Well, Jael, we're grateful for your time, your commitment, and your talents. You have put this community on your back, and I want to publicly thank you for that." I have a nice certificate that's signed by myself, and the mayor is also gonna sign it, and I will put that in the mail to you. And I happen to know that, uh, you're a junior now, but you have, uh, some interest in attending Emerson. Uh, okay, uh, well, your, your future is bright no matter the path, but if it's broadcast journalism or something in that realm, my friend, you are well on your way. Um, I just want you to know again that I am deeply, deeply grateful for all that you've done, and when you get ready to start that college process, and you need some help, some help, why don't you give me a call, I'm happy to help you.
Thank you, I really, really appreciate it. And, um, and I would first like to thank, um, Ms. Dean, because like, she was like, without her, this wouldn't even be possible, and she really like encouraged me to, um, continue like working towards my goal of becoming a news anchor one day. And, um, and I really, really wanted to thank her first, because she's really the one who like, you know, um, like, helped me pave my path, like, towards becoming a news anchor. So, um, thank you, and, you know, I'm super grateful that I was able to even like help just a little bit by making these videos for the District of Lynn. And, and I'm super grateful to have this opportunity. Um, I'm kinda nervous right now, but, uh, I just wanted to thank you guys so much, and uh, I'm looking forward to making many, many more videos that could be helpful to the community, and, yeah.
Back, woo-hoo! Dr. Tutwiler, Afton Dean is on this call as well. I, I would love it if Afton could also put her video on, and, um, let us say thank you to her as well for working with this wonderful student, and, uh, the two of them did an amazing job. Thank you, Afton.
Afton, so grateful, as I expressed to you on the phone yesterday, and, you know, I know for you, it's a labor of love, uh, but, but I, I can't begin to tell you how much it means and how helpful it has been for so many families, the work that you and Jael have done.
Yeah, our pleasure, and it's been so great to be able to make an impact, uh, on the, the families and students in our district. Uh, you know, I know this is a new endeavor for everyone, and any way we can help, it's been an amazing, uh, feat. And I, again, I wanna congratulate Jael. Uh, your talents, uh, go above and beyond, and you're well on your way to do some really special things in your future. So, I, again, I continue to, you know, we'll work with you to continue your growth, and I really look forward to what's to come the next two years. But thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, I really appreciate it, um, and, uh, again, congratulations, Jael.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Great, great work. Jael, uh, congratulations, and Afton, great work as well. We, you, you don't seem nervous, and seeing you on here, we know you're going, um, special places in your future, so great work. We're really proud of what you're doing, and, uh, congratulations from all of us on the committee. Uh, really happy to recognize you tonight, great job.
Thank you.
Got a whistle.
Um, thank you, Dr. Tutwiler as well, and again, to Jael and Afton, great work. Uh, next on the agenda is, um, a request to accept a donation. Uh, Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, uh, simply, uh, this is a, uh, a gift that's being made to Marshall Middle School. Uh, it is actually, um, uh, for a contest that they won. Uh, but it comes, the gift, or the award comes in the form of a, uh, of a telescope that, uh, is in the amount of about two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, so I asked the committee's, uh, support in accepting that donation.
Member Sadaway?
Thank you, uh, that's awesome. I make a motion, uh, for Marshall Middle School to accept the donation from Springfield Telescope Makers Club, AKA Stellifane, in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to purchase a beginner's telescope.
Second.
The motion on the second requires a roll call.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadaway?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. So, ne- next on the agenda is a, uh, update on the building ventilation system, and I know this is something we've been talking about, uh, and has been worked on for a while, so I just wanna, um, uh, go through some of the information and let the committee know tonight, and there'll be more discussion absolutely as part of this. I wanna thank the families, faculty, and school committee members, uh, for all of your patience and understanding during this challenging time. I also wanna thank the Inspection Services Division and the superintendent for their diligence in seeing these reports to completion during a time when a lot of other districts are looking to follow the same process. I know it hasn't been easy, and I appreciate your time and effort as we work through this. Tonight, I'm, uh, happy to, uh, provide, uh, an update on the outcome of the process. Uh, the, you will have the reports tomorrow, the, the reports came in late yesterday, and becau- you know, we wanna make sure that the members get the reports, at least forty-eight hours ahead of time to have a chance to really review them and have a real discussion on it. We wouldn't have gotten them to you till at some point today, so you'll get the reports tomorrow. We, we're gonna, we'll, we'll be discussing those reports and feedback at the next meeting. So, um, all of this has really come together over the last couple of days, in terms of what we've been trying to do, the work that's gone on for a couple of months, so I just wanna make sure all the members know you will get. the work that's gone on for a couple of months. So I just wanna make sure all the members know you will get the, the report and the information related to this tomorrow and we'll, we'll definitely have an opportunity to discussion, discuss it at the, the next meeting. Uh, we really expected to have these reports, uh, by Monday, so we would have been able to get them to you before this, but they didn't come in till late yesterday. Um, and you'll have a chance to review them. Uh, and we didn't, and, and again, we didn't receive all of the ten reports until late yesterday. Um, we requested in early August, the city had requested proposals from three companies to identify the state of the current ventilation system in the ten schools, uh, that are, um, do not have, um, their own ventilation systems and having, that have, uh, and we're all aware of those schools, obviously. Uh, the ten schools are the, the older schools in our district. And to provide recommendations for improvements to optimize indoor air quality. Uh, the city reviewed proposals, um, in August and chose to go with BLW, a mechanical engineering firm, to do those assessments. Uh, by mid-September, we realized that we were facing some challenges obtaining the completed assessments of all of those ten buildings. Uh, attempts at rectifying delay really at that point, um, forced us to get to engage a second company to complete those assessments. Uh, so we engaged Train, which is a design and build company, and they agreed to do the assessments, following up what had been done. Um, some of the work had been done with BLW, but there was, we definitely had to, um, uh, revisit how we were handling it and move to, uh, work with Train. As I said yesterday, we received the ten building H, HBAC reports from Train. Uh, in addition, we received from BLW a design model report for the Link's, Lincoln Thompson School that the company believes we can follow in all ten buildings as a working plan. And as you see that report, it really identifies and, uh, and, uh, a specific set of things we need to do to address, um, the, um, air, air exchange and the air quality opportunities and air, air distribution through the building. And, and as I, I said, when you get the report and reports, uh, you'll get a chance to understand, uh, that clearly. Uh, and really, all, all of the buildings have the same problems. Um, so it, it's a very similar, um, kind of work that will be done to address each of the buildings to, uh, to address the ongoing issues related to the, uh, the, uh, air quality and airflow in those buildings. Um, again, we expected and I'm sure we all know in the state of the buildings and our efforts to try and build new schools, the report tells us what we already know and knew. The ten buildings mech- mechanical ventilation systems are closed off. Uh, all ten buildings were built, were constructed prior to nineteen twenty. Uh, in a, in accordance with building codes in effect at the time, it allowed for gravity ventilation and operable windows as a source of sufficient air exchange. So that was a state of the art at the time, but it really did allow flow through the buildings. Uh, in the nineteen seventies, um, some of, some of us remember it, some on the committee are probably, uh, not, uh, able to remember in the seventies. But during the mid-seventies, when there was a huge, uh, oil crisis and energy prices went through the roof, um, and the extreme explosion of heating oil costs, the city made a decision at that time to abandon these ventilation systems to con- to conserve heating fuel. So those were all blocked up so that the heating of the buildings could, uh, be done at a much more reasonable price considering the cost of, of heating throughout the system of, of the City of Lynn. Um, the good news we have, there are multiple possible solutions to providing fresh air within these buildings. Uh, the next step is to determine building-specific solutions to the za- design and installation of a ventilation system to address each, each of those buildings and, and address what has been really since the nineteen seventies an issue in those buildings. And again, we are well aware of those issues. Um, based on the in- information we received during the course of the assessments being done, ISD, so we got information, uh, interim before the reports were completed. Uh, ISD, based on that, with those recommendations, has purchased portable air purifiers to address air filtration in the classrooms. Uh, Train's file report states that we can address the ventilation issue during the short term future by opening windows and installing portable air purifiers in the classrooms. These air purifiers have been delivered and will be placed at every classroom, cafeteria, uh, and gymnasium in the ten schools. Um, and those actually have arrived as of today. We're hoping that those, all of those, and they will go in every classroom in those ten buildings. Uh, they've been ordered and received as well as, uh, the open spaces, uh, for the, such as gymnasium and cafeteria. Uh, and so again, those were ordered based on the interim report and we've actually have them in place. We're hoping, well, actually haven't, we haven't at City Hall. We're hoping to get them to all the school buildings over the weekend. Hopefully by, uh, the first of the week or early next week, have them all up and running in those buildings. Uh, Green Tech is the environmental company that, um, these, we bought these, uh, um, uh, air filtration systems from. They're electrostatic filtration, which is that if you've heard of HEPA filter or filtered filtration systems, these are actually a step above the HEPA systems. Um, and they're, they're being, I know they're being used in at least one other community, if not, I know communities are looking to do this, so we're really happy we're able to get, uh, those, um, and order them and get them and be available for every single classroom in those buildings as well as the open space. They have offered to, and I'm, I will take them up on that, and I think the, the members will, um, agree with it, uh, to come in, make a presentation to us to explain exactly how they work, uh, what they're, um, you know, what they can do and how they actually filtrate the air. Uh, and then, you know, we will, you know, go with open windows with the air filtration in every, in every class in these buildings. Uh, again, that was the short-term recommendation that we got from Train. Uh, again, we'll have, you'll be able to see the reports. There's a longer-term recommendations based on addressing actually, um, working to physically, um, uh, resolve the, what had been done in the nineteen seventies and we can talk further about that. Uh, but again, that report will help us have those discussions over the next couple of weeks. But then, again, in the interim, we've addressed, based on their recommendations, taking that, uh, and, and, and making sure that these buildings have both the filters, the, uh, the air filtration, uh, in each place as well as, um, uh, what we need to do in the interim. Um, and again, those are the ten schools, Arabon, Brickett, Carbit, Drewitz, Fecto, Fallon, Lincoln Thompson, Pickering, Tracy, and Washington. Again, the older schools in the district. Um, and again, those, the, the air filtration systems meet the CDC recommendations. So we are following the CDC recommendations and I look forward to, um, bringing in the, the company to allow us to really have a discussion with them so they can explain it in person. Um, how those work and what they mean as we, again, in the interim, uh, address the issues in those buildings and hopefully, uh, not only address as we work through this pandemic, but I think by addressing what is being identified by the engineering firm of those blocked up, uh, air filtration or the airflow systems, uh, would actually improve uh, the quality, uh, that we all know has been an issue for a long time. So, uh, we're addressing it here during the pandemic, but as time moves on, um, it will be an investment that as we, uh, try and get our hands around trying to make that happen that will really improve the quality and of airflow in the buildings that we've all, as members, as well as parents and, and teachers understand there's been issues in those buildings related to the, um, the air that's in, that had been in there prior to the pandemic. So, uh, that's, that's the update. I think it'll be a, a good opportunity to have a further discussion. When we get, when you get a chance to see those reports, we will have it on the agenda for the next meeting. And with that, I'd really like to ask, uh, Dr. Tutwiler, uh, to speak to this, uh, as well, and then happy to take some questions from, uh, from the members. Um, uh, Mike Donovan is not on the call tonight. He was on. Uh, tentatively was gonna be on, but I think it, it more appropriate that he is available for questions. Um, probably along with Joe Smart at the next meeting, um, when, when we get a chance to hear from, uh, from Green Tech and talk about the, the equipment that actually at that point will be in the buildings and be operating. Uh, and the one piece that I know is, is even, um, uh, my understanding is so the, the good piece of this equipment is that they have filters that can actually be cleaned and washed. Uh, so they're different than the, the heat, the HEPA, uh, filtration systems, which means they can, they work better. You can clean them easily and so they can continue to, um, provide the air filtration necessary. So it's a, uh, uh, like I said, it's a step up from what the HEPA, um, equipment would provide. So with that, uh, I think we'll probably have a broader discussion about, um, you know, the longer term as well as, uh, how this equipment is working at the next meeting. But Dr. Tutwiler, um, like to have Dr. Tutwiler speak and then I see Member Sadowite is, um, has a question, but first I'd like to go to Dr. Tutwiler.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, uh, briefly, um, I'll work backwards. I mean, ultimately, it is good news that, um, the uh, engineering firm, uh, has made a, a recommendation for a short-term solution that involves uh, those air purifiers along with, uh, fresh air sourced through open windows. Uh, and I believe there is a, um, recommendation for, uh, you know, creating that same sort of fresh air exchange when it's cold outside, uh, with, uh, an additional heating source. Uh, so that, that is good news. Um, but as, as the mayor knows, and I, I feel compelled to say, the bad news is, um, you know, the, this is something, it's, it's October eighth. Uh, we've been talking about this since, uh, July twenty-seventh. And I've come on this, um, come to this meeting, uh, a number of times and I've said thirty days, thirty days. Um, because that's what I was told. Uh, and I think, um, you know, I, this is not a space where I talk about my feelings, but I, I'm, I'm actually pretty disappointed in the way that this went. Um, and it cannot, we have to be better as a leadership group, um, on these sorts of issues when people's trust, it always matters, but in situations that we, like this, it matters more. Uh, and so, um, you know, we also have a scenario where there's a recommendation for, um, a safe scenario. What about today? What about yesterday? What about the last three weeks? Um, that my professional colleagues have been in buildings. Uh, that upsets me. Uh, and so I think the only unconscionable thing to do until those, uh, filters are in the room and that system is set up is to revisit the MOA with the unions, uh, and make, uh, work in buildings, uh, optional.
Member Sadowite, thank you, Dr. Tutwiler.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Tutwiler. That, that, that was gonna be, um, my, my response to this. Obviously, I, I've been asking, uh, for this report for a, a, a good period of time. It's now the eighth of October. We need to make a decision, um, on what we're gonna do. I believe we set the deadline for November twentieth. Can you keep me honest?
That's the date I-
Okay. So if we're going to the next meeting, uh, we're, we're gonna be limited to about thirty days to, to now start negotiating uh, with these unions, uh, as to what, what, what the next chapter of our, of, of, of our of this, uh, school year is gonna look like. And it's, it's, you know, I, in a perfect world, we would have had this, um, you know, a month ago, but it, it, it didn't happen. Um, and again, having teachers work in these, these buildings without these particular recommendations is, is definitely troubling and, and, you know, it's not just the students. We also have to worry about, uh, who we employ, which is about a thousand people. So we need to make sure that, um, our buildings are safe. And we, we all know that our buildings are old. We all know that, uh, there are workspaces that aren't in the, the best conditions, but we, we didn't have COVID then. We have COVID now. So, um, I, I'd like to know, um, Dr. Tutwiler, if we need to push, um, this, this timeline that we set for ourselves or if this is from Desi, uh, further, or, or are we gonna try to, to keep with it?
Sorry, do you mean the expiration date of the existing allowances?
Yes, and, and the, the reason why we, we use that date was because that's when we, we planned on having uh, a, a discussion prior to, to, to determine if we were gonna do hybrid or, or if we're gonna stick with this. And we obviously set guidelines with regards to, uh, the percentage of, of positive rates, which are going down. Thank you, Mayor, and, and the ci- city employees that have helped push that message. So I, I, I would hate that the, the community is doing good, but yet the onus is on us because our buildings aren't, are, are, aren't safe. So, you know, that, that should have been the first thing and then we worked on the, the, the COVID rate, but it, it seems as though we're, we're just getting the information now. And you're calling these a temporary fix. Well, wha- what does that mean?
Um, when you, when you get the, the, the report, it will lay out for you a, you know, a permanent solution, uh, which essentially involves, um, you know, re-establishing the existing fresh air exchange systems in those buildings. Uh, maybe with some updates. I'm not an engineer. This is something, as the mayor was alluding to, uh, in the next meeting, engineers can talk more eloquently, uh, about. Um, but, you know, in the short term, uh, now, next week, or whenever we can get those in place, that creates a scenario where it is, you know, the fresh air exchange in, in, in those spaces um, meets CDC compliance, uh, meets, uh, ASHRAE and, you know, uh, all the other, uh, you know, standards for a fresh air exchange in a, in a given space. We're able to do that, or so I understand now, um, with the devices that will be in the rooms. Um, so, you know, you know, the long term is the, the reopening of the systems. The short term is those, um, air purifiers and open windows.
Are, are, ha- have we reached out to any other district that, that are using these other, um, systems and
Yeah.
teachers are, are fine?
Yeah, um, it, the, the, the closest comparison would be, uh, New Bedford, uh, which has uh, six buildings, I believe, that don't have, uh, HBAC systems, uh, in them. And they purchased, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of five, six hundred, uh, air purifiers, uh, and there a community that is not in the red, so they actually have students also, uh, in the building. And, uh, you know, in my brief exchange uh, with that superintendent, it seems to be going okay.
And we'll definitely have this on the next agenda, um, Mayor.
Absolutely. And, you know, the point's well taken. I think, uh, in fairness, the, the attempt was made right from the, at the end of July to move forward on this. Uh, and the process, uh, slowed down beyond anyone's control. So this wasn't something that anybody was trying to, you know, I know that, uh, Dr. Tutwiler continuously was talking about, we were, we were all talking about it. So we were anticipating, um, this obviously earlier. Um, so it is, you know, obviously we've been challenged on this and we wanna make sure that, uh, we continue to do the right thing, you know, I, uh, not that this is reflective of anything, but, uh, the city, it's on its own. I mean, City Hall is in a similar situation. There is no uh, air exchange in that building. Uh, and, you know, so, you know, we, we are dealing in a community with a lot of infrastructure needs. That doesn't mean we, we shouldn't be dealing with this, with, with, which we are. But, uh, like I said, we, we, you know, when this was asked to be dealt with and, and as like New Bedford or many communities are dealing with the same thing, similar communities that have similar old buildings with large populations, so.
What about electrical issues? Anything like that in City Hall, Mayor?
Uh, yes. Yep. There are electrical issues, particularly with, um, and I'll get to, let's talk about air conditioning in City Hall. I mean, the summer, there were, there were days when there were offices that were ninety-eight degrees. Uh, we really were challenged and the reality of trying to expand air conditioning in that building and airflow is, is not just putting the equipment in the building, but it's, it's upgrading the electrical, because the electric couldn't, couldn't handle an increase in, in, even if we were doing units and individual offices. So, uh, that's a, that's a probably a four, three or four million dollar project on its, on its own to create, so it makes City Hall, uh, a place. I see, and I see Member Gately, we'll get to Member Gately next. Unless Dr. Tutwiler has a point to that. So, again, that doesn't, that doesn't change the dynamic of what we're talking about here in the schools. Uh, we're all aware of this and, and so we'll continue to work through it. We'll, um, you know, uh, we'll have this right on the next meeting. Uh, I know that there is, the work is not cheap to do this, but if there's an ability to find the dollars, which we're gonna work on, um, to see how we can make that happen, uh, that would be something we'd wanna get done if we can find the resources within this school year. It would be a number of months to get it done. But I do think the, the silver lining in, in, in all of it, uh, if there is one that we can look at, is this probably is something that should have been done over the last several decades. Uh, you know, closing up in the seventies absolutely probably made sense at the time. But, you know, sometimes you make decisions that have long-term effects that aren't anticipated. And so these, these buildings have, have had these issues without a pandemic. Uh, at least now we're really, we're clearly identifying what those issues are. And then we can really upgrade the opportunity post-pandemic uh, by the longer-term solution. And longer-term doesn't mean ten years. Longer-term means can we get it done um, in a reasonable period of time and find the resources to do it. But that will mean that these buildings will be, um, um, much better to be, um, you know, working and, and teaching and, and learning in, uh, when we get past the pandemic. So there'll be an actual ability to flow, you know, air through the building, which really needs to happen in those buildings. So, Member Gately?
Dr. Tutwiler, I have a quick question. Um, were you suggesting that we offer choice to teachers to go into the buildings?
In those ten buildings.
In those ten buildings. Okay.
That's what I was gonna clarify.
All right. So, and, and I would support you in that. I, the report was due. You didn't get it. We worked for it. Um, Maggie, we worked hard to get that. Uh, Joe Smart is on, on this, um, Zoom call, I believe. Isn't he there? Is Joe Smart there?
I'm not sure if he's here.
Name's there.
His name is there. So we'd have to unmute his, um, Dr. Tuttwiler, do you wanna, because I would support you on that, this, um, choice to go into the buildings. That was my, what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Uh, and while he might be there, Mayor, I, I would recommend that, that the conversation be had with the, uh, head of ISD and the engineers, uh, so that we can, you know, have all the questions answered and have a robust conversation.
No, I think that makes sense. And like I said, we're gonna bring in, so I think the questions in terms of what it means to have these filters in the classrooms, how it reflects what the CDC does, what, what it means with open windows in terms of, uh, how that creates, um, you know, positive air quality in those rooms. That, that, that'll be the discussion we have with the company. Uh, and I think that's probably appropriate when, and, and again, that's a, uh, they offered that up as the report came in. And, you know, again, this has come together over the last few days in terms of the equipment coming in. Uh, so, I mean, you know, the timing at least, uh, wasn't a, um, couldn't get it done in terms of a broader discussion tonight, but those pieces of equipment will be in within the next five or six days. We'll have, within the next meeting, have a chance to talk about it and really get a better understanding of what they mean. And then we'll have a, a broader discussion on where we go in terms of the, uh, the larger investment that we'll have to make to resolve the issues in those ten buildings. Uh, Member Ford? And then Member Nicholson?
Yeah, just one quick question. Do the, are these units that we're buying, are these internal units or they have to vent to the outside?
They're inter- they're internal units from what I understand. And I, I, I haven't seen them. So, uh, it's still, you know, still part of it is keeping the windows open, but they're internal, they're internal units that, you know, they're air purifiers, so the air flows through it and purifies the air. There's filters, the filters. And I think it was, I think we, I was, I was reading the, um, the explanation today, uh, the, um, um, let me see what, the electrostatic filtration, it draws the air and anything in the air into these filtration, uh, the, the, um, the filters in the, in the, uh, equipment. So that everything, you know, takes to that and then you can clean those, those filters, um. I don't know, you know, we'll, we'll find that out. I don't know the specifics on the timeline. But again, they'll be in each classroom and there'll be bigger ones in the areas of, um, you know, the, the larger areas in the buildings. Member Nicholson, then Member Capola.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, and thank you, everybody, your work on this. Uh, I understand this, this came together pretty last minute, so obviously we haven't seen the report, but, uh, questions based on what I've heard tonight. I just wanna clarify, the Dr. Tuttwiler suggested to make it optional to come in, uh, is, is starting now, meaning that there's, uh, risks of people that, who have been coming in over the last month that we're trying to avoid.
Uh, can you repeat the question?
That, so, uh, my, when I had asked about this, my understanding was the results of the test were going to inform our decisions about what happens when students come back. And that there was no risk to student, to teachers who were gonna be there in the classroom by themselves. The, the suggestion that you submitted this evening, which is the first I've heard of it, uh, it makes it sound to me like there is a risk to the teachers coming in now, even though students haven't come in yet. Is that the case?
Um, my suggestion's being made based on the language in the report, which I, I just saw that, that my suggestion, uh, is about, uh, four hours old. Uh, but this is very, very new. Um, and in the report, uh, the language states something to the effect that the current ventilation does not meet code. Uh, and then they make a recommendation for, uh, a way that it can. Uh, and I, I, I believe that given that information, I, I, in fairness, uh, uh, to staff, uh, and embracing what I've been saying about safety being first, uh, that seems to me to be the right, the right way to go. Now, to be clear, um, we all knew that those ten buildings did not have ventilation systems. We, we've known that. They haven't for forty years. Uh, and there were, uh, viable, solid, uh, examples of buildings in the city that were, you know, open to the public, um, you know, fully staffed. City Hall, uh, the, the courthouse right across the street, um, don't have ventilation systems. Folks are working in there. They've opened windows. There have not been issues. And so it was based on that experience that I felt comfortable, uh, recommending that staff return, especially given the M O A where they have, um, dedicated workspaces, um, to themselves during the day. But given this latest piece with the report, uh, I think it's best to wait until those, um, air purifiers are in place before we continue to ask staff to come in. They may report if they want to. We've had no issues. Uh, but given the language in there, I'm, I'm just uncomfortable saying, mandating that they come in according to the M O A.
And, and I think just to follow up, um, on that, uh, it does say that does not meet code. And, um, it didn't meet code, probably wasn't meeting code in terms of ventilation last December. Uh, so I don't think there's an indication that there's been a, I, I don't think there's an indication that the code was being met until COVID arrived. I think the, uh, the, the, uh, it does not meet the code in terms of ventilation, currently in terms of what you're, you're talking about in a building. Again, get back to City Hall, that doesn't meet code in terms of the kind of vent, ventilation we're talking about. But I think Dr. Tuttwiler is absolutely right, like as reflective of the report, to, um, uh, make the recommendation he made, uh, until those, um, the, the, um, the air filtration didn't get into the building, uh, I think is a prudent, uh, decision to make for sure. You have another point, uh, Member Nicholson?
Yeah, I have a question about the cost of the machines, uh, and how that, that is gonna be paid for and, and.
That's, um, that's gonna be through the CARES Act. Um, I'm pre- I'm pretty sure Dr. Tuttwiler is, my, my understanding is those dollars and, and we, those dollars specifically, uh, related to this, um, and, and I, I'd have to ask Mike Bertino. I don't know if Kevin is on the call as well. Um, I'm pretty sure those dollars are coming. Yes, go ahead, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Quickly, this was an ISD purchase. Um, so I, I'm not sure from what lines or what, what, um, resources they drew, uh, to, to make that purchase.
Kevin, you wanna speak to that?
They would qualify. Sure, Mr. Mayor, they would qualify. The city has their own CARES Act funds and I believe they could either use the city budget or those CARE funds, which I'm sure Mike Bertino would use the CARE Funds Act because this is a qualifying expense.
And I didn't, that's great. I didn't ask him specifically, but we have, definitely have, uh, you know, we have substantial dollars to address COVID under the CARES Act. Uh, and I think I probably just assumed that these dollars are gonna be directly coming out of the CARES Act, not out of the school budget. Uh, so that is, um, you know, the, again, that's at least, uh, you know, that mitigates the, the, uh, impact obviously on the financial side. So, uh, I'd be, I'd be shocked if it wasn't CARES Act money, but we'll get that answer at the next, the next meeting. Uh, I, I should have asked Mike Bertino that specifically, but again, I think because we've been spending a lot of dollars directly related to these, the impact of COVID, um, on, with CARES Act dollars, we've been able to address a lot of issues related to that. Um, but, uh, you know, there's money I'm sure available that does not impact the school budget. Now, the longer term, the longer term solution to follow up on that, that's a different, that's a different, um, situation. There's, there, there won't be, uh, and I, I'm pretty sure Mike Bertino looked into this as well. But that's a, that's a bigger issue in terms of the cost and, and the factors. So that, that probably, uh, is not going to be available on CARES Act, so we're gonna have to find those dollars.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I, I think, I think, uh, to Dr. Tuttwiler's point about, uh, the transparency and, and, uh, the cultivation of trust coming from leadership, I think we're gonna need to ask, ask ourselves some really hard questions about how we were made to understand that this was about when students come back and wasn't about when teachers were there in the building. Um, and we need to ask ourselves those questions and be ready to answer them so that we can make sure that we are instilling trust in everyone, especially to Dr. Tuttwiler's point about, um, the, the, the concerns that people have about their health. Uh, I also wanna point out, we all know this, but, you know, we're, we're, we're in a, we're in a city that's been hit very hard by COVID. We're dealing with these impacts, uh, because there's been decades of underinvestment in infrastructure. And if you were to go back, uh, Mr. Manon through a time machine, I'm sure, uh, the people that were making this decision in nineteen seventies, may, maybe one reason why they felt, okay, doing this, because they never would have imagined that all these schools would be in operation fifty years later. Um, and I know that's something, Mr. Mayor, that you are working on hard and your team is, and that we all are to try to update this. But it's just another example of how, uh, uh, communities are experiencing this pandemic, uh, with, with disparate impact.
No, it's, and, and, uh, there were a number of schools that were actually being used at schools that are now either public housing or businesses, uh, you know, a number of school buildings that, that were, were in the, in the seventies were school buildings for all the city students have been, you know, some of us with gray hair can remember those things. But, yeah, I did, I, you know, and, and it was really a crazy time financially, uh, the oil crisis. I mean, seventies, it was really a, um, you know, that was the, the oil embargo and anybody that lived through that, it was, uh, it was a crazy time. So I, I, I'm sure that, that, that the decision was made, uh, because the budget wasn't able to handle the kind of costs, the explosion of, of, uh, of, um, heating oil that took to, you know, and all of these schools, we, you know, we hadn't built, you know, at that point, um, there was the effect o' leary and, you know, English had not been rehabbed, um. Uh, you know, there, there was, most of the schools were old. I think the Hood School was probably the newest school at the time. That was probably fifteen years old. So, uh, it was a different decisions that were made at that point. But again, I, I think, you know, everybody on this, that's, that's part of this, we, we wanna make sure we're doing the right thing. And, um, you know, we took, we took the, uh, the actions early on to try and get this information. Um, and I, I think other communities are in the same boat that have older schools. So we'll just, we'll just move forward. And I think Dr. Tuttwiler is, is taking the appropriate action and will address this with the full committee, uh, related to the ongoing issues in the building over the next, uh, at the next meeting. And, and good questions and, and I think everybody has really worked hard to do the right thing. We're really been inundated with, uh, something that, uh, there was no playbook for, um, for any of us, uh, uh, as we went, went into this in March, you know, remote learning, shutting down schools, trying to figure out where we're going, not, not knowing at this point what the flu season will bring. Uh, twenty-six states that are seeing substantial increases. Uh, obviously the White House, uh, have an explosion of, of cases, thirty-eight cases there. I mean, this is a issue that we're all trying to get our hands around. So, um, everybody's really working to, to try and do the right thing under really unique set of circumstances and has worked hard to try and make it happen. So we'll continue to do that and, and we, you know, the underlying, you've heard it from me and I know everybody believes this. Our underlying number one priority is, is safety and, 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 but this continues to evolve. Information that we get, uh, changes the things that we do. Um, and sometimes we don't have the information right away, but we get the information and we act on it when we get it. So, um, uh, Member, Member Capola had a question, then Member Ford.
Um, have these, um, portable devices already been ordered or are they in, are they in our possession?
They're in, they're in City Hall now. They'll be in, we've hopefully got them to every building. All the equipment has arrived. It's in City Hall. They're, uh, they're putting, uh, you know, they're identifying it so they know, you know, when we get equipment in the city, this, this, they identify it by serial codes or however they do it. Uh, we're hoping over the weekend that those will all be delivered to the schools and by early next week. Um, hopefully by Tuesday, but that all of this equipment will be at the schools and will be up and running. So we have it. Uh, they were purchased. We have them. They're here and, and it's just a question of, uh, I think they got them today, actually. Uh, it's a question of getting them out to the schools over the weekend and what's, um, positive about this weekend, and we have a three-day weekend to, to kinda deal with it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Member Ford?
Yeah, I, I have a question. If, if we, as Dr. Tuttwiler, Tuttwiler has said, have any issue or any concerns at all with the fact that we may have a safety problem in the schools for these teachers right now, then we should not wait two weeks until the next school committee meeting. That should be something I think we as a group should address tonight. Um, I happen to have two daughters working on those schools, so I'm concerned.
Isn't that what Dr. Tuttwiler said, that has, he, he's gonna give them the option?
Did we, did we vote on that? Did we make, that's my, just my question. Does it require a vote? Are you just gonna?
I, I don't think it requires a vote.
Okay.
Attorney Myhose, accord- according to the M O U, isn't it? Uh, 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 at the discretion of the superintendent?
Attorney Myhose?
Or Patrick? Uh, sorry, Dr. Tuttwiler.
I believe that language is in there, uh, and I can, uh, easily connect with, uh, the union leadership tomorrow to, you know, craft an amendment if need be in partnership with, uh, Mr. Myhose.
Yeah, I was, I believe it's, uh, the superintendent's correct. The language is in there and gives the authority to the superintendent to make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I appreciate the discussion. Obviously, this, uh, we continue to face challenges, uh, the buildings as, as, uh, Member Nicholson said, has been a longstanding issue and that's why we have made the attempts to try and, uh, continue to get in the process of building new schools. Uh, the financial situation has kind of, uh, continues to change the dynamic, but that doesn't mean we're still, you know, we're still, we'll have, uh, further discussion about where we go in terms of the S, uh, the S O I, uh, that, that deadline is till the end of this, uh, December. Uh, we have, you know, took the first steps on that towards a new building. Uh, it couldn't be clearer why we're looking at that, um, because all of these buildings, it would be great if we could replace all of these buildings, but that's obviously not. Uh, we don't have that ability right now, but I think we need to keep our eyes on the prize and, and start to take those schools as we can and, and continue to move forward on the statement of interest. It's not anything we haven't talked about here on this committee. Um, we were not successful several years ago in, in getting a new, um, uh, junior high school. Uh, that's why we're gonna continue that effort. Uh, and this, uh, this, this, uh, clearly identifies that the issues that these buildings face are longstanding and, and, uh, continue to take a look at what we need to do to address them. So I appreciate everyone's input on this. Uh, check out the, um, the reports in the morning, um, over, over the next few days and we will have, we'll have a broader discussion. And I know Dr. Tuttwiler, who's worked hard, uh, through all of this, um, uh, you know, pretty challenging times. A lot of, a lot of school districts are dealing with the same thing. Uh, only a handful are dealing with seventeen thousand students in twenty-seven buildings. So it really is a unique situation that we're, we've been, uh, dealing with, uh, both post, pre-pandemic, but clearly has highlighted and put a spotlight on the challenges we, we face as we've been dealing with this pandemic. And, um, you know, there's been a lot of hard work and a lot of people trying to make, make this, this right and we'll continue to do that together. So, uh, thank you all for, um, your discussions on this. Uh, next on the agenda is, um, ratification of votes taken in the Personnel Subcommittee and on the Policy Subcommittee. So first up is the Personnel Subcommittee.
Yes, Mayor, um, we had Personnel Subcommittee meeting and the committee approved to throw to the full committee, the job posting a director of Lynn Public Schools Welcome Center with, um, small amounts of, um, additions on line one where it's master's degree in social work counseling and we're adding on or related field. And at the end of the sentence, the word preferred. So I'd like to put that in the form of a motion before the full committee.
There's a motion and a second? Any discussion?
I'm sorry.
We've got a second? Uh, no, no discussion, uh, roll call required.
Chris Wallace?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Sadey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sato?
Yes.
Who are they doing?
Yes.
Yes.
And just, and just a quick point before we get to the next, um, ratification of votes in the Policy Subcommittee. I did get a text, uh, from, uh, Mike Bertino and yes, we are using CARES Act dollars for all of the air purifiers in the building, so those dollars are coming from the CARES Act. So, uh, that answers your question, uh, good question, but it answers your question. Next, um, Member Nicholson on the Policy Subcommittee?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. There were two options made. Uh, the first was to approve the bo- the bullying policy that was submitted, uh, and sent to the full committee. And the second was to approve the Tadana harassment and non-discrimination policy and to send it to the full committee.
Second? There's a second? Um, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, uh, roll call is required.
Chris Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Saturday?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Saturday?
Yes.
Mammagie?
Yes. Next on the agenda is a request for executive session to discuss the strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to local thirty-one forty-seven A. Um is there a motion?
Motion uh for a request to go into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to local thirty-one forty-seven A Nurses Union?
Is there a second? Is a second requires a roll call?
Mr. Casianas?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Saturday?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Saturday?
I I have no vote on this.
Go back.
Can I make a motion to go back into regular session?
Motion to go back into regular session is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh motion made to go back in regular session, second, requires a roll call.
Oh, um, Mr. Casianas?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Saturday? Mr. Saturday?
I don't see her.
Mr. Nicholson?
I thought I saw her.
No, she just texted me. She must be having a problem getting back in.
Okay.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Saturday?
Yes.
Yes, and Mammagie?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we will, we're back in regular session. We will wait to get Lorraine reconnected. Mary, is she is she trying to sign back on? Uh ratification of votes taken in executive session.
Okay.
Uh Jim, um would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we um have a ratification of votes taken in executive session relative to local three-one-four-seven A the Nurses Union motion made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh requires a roll call.
Casianas?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Saturday?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Saturday?
No vote for me, please.
Uh Mammagie?
Yes.
Does this need to be uploaded to Dot Loop, uh Mr. Mayor? Or is this Patrick alone?
Patrick, you can sign that, correct? Excuse me, Dr. Tutwiler.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler. So we're all set. Thank you, Member Saturday. Um the final uh piece of the um final uh agenda item tonight is communications and information. Dr. Tutwiler, do you have uh a report you'd like to uh um present to the committee?
I do.
Great, thank you.
Everybody able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh so you know, we're we're very quickly uh approaching the one-month benchmark uh of the school year uh in full remote learning. Uh having established new systems, protocols, develop new skill sets uh and learn new tools and adapted in countless ways uh to launching a school year unlike uh in way in a way we've never had before. Um I'd like to say that we're moving right along. Uh I set ambitious district-wide goals of one hundred percent of students having an internet-connected device and signed on to Schoology and an average daily attendance of ninety-five percent by October ninth. With one day to go before that uh chosen deadline, we have come very close to meeting that goal. At present, ninety-one percent of the current enrollment has signed on to Schoology, and we've distributed just over fourteen thousand devices, which constitutes ninety percent of the total student body. Bear in mind that some families have chosen to use their own device. With the recent arrival uh and distribution, which began uh yesterday, actually, of iPads, we should have enough devices to cover our kindergarteners and thus get very close to reaching that one hundred percent goal. Our average daily attendance has hovered around ninety-two percent. Setting ambitious goals is a non-negotiable, now more so than ever. As has been said on numerous occasions, we are very quickly evolving to meet uh the important task of facilitating learning and development, and few endeavors supersede that one. Moving quickly is a necessity, yet doing so also underscores challenges and limitations. Moving quickly also makes potential pitfalls harder to see. We are in the process of developing a mechanism that would allow us to more effectively monitor and mine for existing issues and to the extent possible, predict potential issues down the line, given the newness of so many systems, structures, protocols, and tools. Uh we know there will be challenges. Success this year will depend in large part on our ability to quickly address issues as they arise and accurately predict and avoid potential challenges. With a little more than two weeks of instruction under our belt, uh we are again quickly moving to gain deeper insight to where students are academically. To help in this effort, we are finalizing a universal academic screening tool. The tool, which is called iReady, is a fully virtual, standards-aligned platform, and is provided to Lynn Public Schools at no cost through a partnership with Leslie University. This will allow staff to accurately pinpoint gaps in learning and plan instruction accordingly. We see this as a significant step forward in terms of post-quarantine data-driven instruction. It is also a step forward in that it represents the first district-wide universal academic screener. We're excited to take this step. Teaching and learning continues in earnest. Embracing a philosophy of providing more opportunities for connection and engagement, we're also planning to launch after-school clubs and activities at the end of October. Clubs will be facilitated virtually and will be low-stakes opportunities for connection and a much-needed factor for students. In the same realm, we remain limited in what we can offer in terms of high school athletics beyond virtual experiences. Communities that remain in the red, according to the state metric, and are providing learning remotely cannot engage in athletics, competition, or practice. This has been clarified and confirmed directly from the commissioner. We're hopeful that our student athletes will begin to engage in the fall too season, beginning in late February. Finally, uh in what little research there is about teaching and learning in this context, there seems to be a perceptible tie that binds around the idea that partnership with families yields stronger student outcomes, very much as it does in any context. Outreach has been significant in our effort to connect students with our learning management system. We've taken the next step this week uh to uh enact our parent guardian log-ons on uh in Schoology. A process that will span the next couple of weeks. As of today, there are six hundred and two parents logged on. Doing so will allow for more seamless communication with parents in the language of choice and a two-way opportunity for communication as well. Related, principals are establishing their school site councils, and we're in the early stages of establishing super-users, the name might change, a group of parents that are guardians who will receive extended training in Schoology to serve as a resource for other parents and guardians. Among the various advancements and steps forward, there's certainly one to be taken in the realm of partnership with our families, and I'll just add two other things. Um we are excited, we received a notification of two grants this week. Uh one in the amount of forty thousand dollars uh from the Smith Family Foundation uh and another in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars from the Schusterman Family Foundation. At our next meeting, I'm happy to dive a little bit deeper about what those are all about.
Member Nicholson?
Thank you for those updates. Uh that is all right to hear about the efforts that we're making. Uh I think the connection around the parent engagement and guardian engagement is is uh particularly uh interesting and we look forward to learning more. Uh my question is about the athletics. Uh I appreciate you looking into that and you know, I I as always for me and for everyone here, I think safety is first, and we understand that. Uh I I find it particularly frustrating that uh I've heard from coaches and heard from parents or from students that are missing out on opportunities. And and for some of them, I understand that's gonna happen because we have to follow the health rules. It it is it is uh anecdotally, I'm hearing people talk about opportunities that they're missing uh with colleges, losing out on college scholarships because uh college coaches aren't able to see our kids uh practice or play or workout. And I'm not knocking any of the health precautions, because those are important. The idea that colleges, the NCAA, would penalize our students who are in a public school because they're in a city that's hit hard by the pandemic, I find to be just so frustrating and outrageous. I uh I I I I this pandemic has had so many consequences and and you know, people are dealing with the pain and suffering and and everyone's are being affected differently. And and you know, sports isn't necessarily the same level as some of the health issues and uh uh mental health issues that people are having, but it's it's incredibly important. And I think that we I'd like to see us uh talk more with the uh Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, other cities that are in our position to to maybe try to have conversations with the NCAA to make to 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 get them to agree to not hold our kids homeless, to find ways on their end to come up with uh innovative ways to evaluate talent, you know, virtually or with old tapes or through interviews. I I I think it's, I'd like to see us make that that effort if it's if it's possible.
Uh Dr. Tutwiler?
Yeah, just quickly, uh as a uh fellow uh former student athlete, um uh I I share your concern. Uh and and I'll have you know that um you know, a couple of things. One, um I wanted to make sure that um you know, we weren't missing anything in terms of other communities that are in the red and also in full remote learning. Uh and so I've been in touch with two superintendents of those communities, also who are not doing any practice or any competition uh for their student athletes. As it relates to college, I I agree. First, I would say um no colleges, no Division One colleges are doing any in-person recruiting until January one. There's a ban on that. Um so we are fortunate in that way. Uh but what they've taken to doing, and I've spoken to two this week, um is using old footage, um because you know, a lot of what's done in recruiting is is around projecting uh potential, right? You know, a student may have certain talents now, but they're they're trying to see, you know, where that student will be in a year, two years down the line, so they're doing that. And then uh I I will also say, in certain sports, uh basketball being one of them, there continues to be competition happening in uh New Hampshire and other safe states. Uh and a lot of those run virtual live feeds that coaches are able to see. And I know that a number of student athletes uh from this community are participating in those. And so I would say uh and and that's just one sport. I know there are other sports, but I would say from the perspective of at least two college coaches, and I know it's not across the board, and that's Division One, not two or three. Um you know, they they are, they've taken to using technology and old footage to evaluate and and recruit. Um and then there are still opportunities for students to engage um elsewhere uh and and be seen. Uh but I I share I share your concern. Um I mean, I have not heard specifically of students losing out on those opportunities just yet. Uh but the potential is certainly there, so I I share your concern.
Deputy Superintendent Reggio?
I just want to add to that, that the um athletic directors have worked very hard, meeting with uh MIAA, meeting with um you know, the the Northeast Conference uh ADs. The principals have met, so it's not that they're not trying. Um but you know, there are some things that are just out of our control and it's going on deaf ears. Uh so you know, and they continue to try. They do continue to try. We have set up uh virtual fall um sports for uh the fall sports and the coaches, is my understanding from Mr. uh Mr. Geary, is that you know, the coaches have started that process. We're doing as much as we can uh and trying to advocate as hard as we can, and it's unfortunately, it's just not going anywhere.
Yeah, and 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 thank you so much, uh both Dr. Teller and and Mrs. Geary. That's that's very helpful and energy what you what you are doing, what the ADs are doing, what the coaches are doing. Um my 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 ask is, when we feel like the team has sort of hit a wall, so to speak, when when it is out of our control, my request would be to please bring that back to us, because that's the time where we can uh send a letter on behalf of the district, uh you know, pass a resolution and 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 try to call some attention to the to the issue. Um and so that that would be my request. So thank you for all that you're doing on it.
I'd just like to follow up. I think it's a great point that we should be uh maybe thinking about how we send a message strongly as a committee and as a community if we're not getting that. And 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 I, you know, I know we're talking about sports, but there's also other um outside of the classroom activities that students uh shine in. So I uh whether it be our as a community of Lynn, but maybe as joint communities to send some messages to some of these schools. Um strong messages and indications of, this is one year. Uh they, you know, the um the reputation of those schools and their ability to recognize this nationwide challenge. I mean, twenty-six states are starting right now. There's twenty-six states that continue to rise. Cases are going up. Wisconsin's um a flame. So I can't imagine there's a lot going on there. So I think it's a good point uh uh in terms of what we can maybe do and send a message and kind of shape that to think about it a little bit and shape that discussion. Uh Dr. Tutwiler, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but I think it's a great point for us to maybe make a strong statement to some of these schools and say, uh this is a unique situation. I know they've looked at SATs and all these other pieces of the puzzle that don't necessarily reflect. Uh this is a different, everybody is is impacted differently and uh you know, uh people need to understand that we should be working together to ensure everyone has the right opportunity. Um anybody that looks back at twenty-twenty in particular is gonna recognize that as we get through twenty-twenty, and it's hard to say now, but that the the students and and that have gone through this and then excelled as they will um are gonna be the ones that these schools will will want to have as part of their um you know, their um school population. So I think it's a really good point. Uh and and I think we should shape, you know, flesh out exactly how we can do this. And Dr. Tutwiler, I know you're working with some other other communities. We do that as mayors on certain issues. Maybe it's a uh something we put together as a as a group uh as a group message um to clearly identify, give these kids a fair shot. So I think we follow up on that and 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 again, with with uh uh maybe the lack of success from with the ADs and whatever's going on, then we can maybe take some and make a strong voice come from at least us and hopefully with other support in other communities. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thanks, Mayor.
Any other uh points of discussion? Uh thank you, Dr. Tutwiler, for that presentation. Want to thank you all. A very important discussion tonight. Uh Member Capola?
I'm sorry, I'm just wondering about the food program, because I thought there was gonna be announcement tonight about Wednesday, starting on Wednesdays. Is that already for take off yet?
Dr. Tutwiler, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, uh it is. Uh and we we've actually uh completed or polished a video um that if it hasn't been posted yet, it will be. Uh but we we will be offering meals at seven sites on Wednesdays from four to seven P M. It will be a week's worth of meals, uh so families for a nice convenience factor. Um and Kevin might need to help me on those on those schools, the seven schools.
Uh yes, it's uh Ford, Ingalls, Harrington, Carbin, Druids, Lincoln, and Tracy.
Any other questions, Member Capola, related to that?
Uh no, I just hope that we get that message out, because um I still, I talked to some, a family today with four children. He didn't even know that he could go and it's a whole month now to be able to pick up food. So we really gotta still get that message out to them. I don't know how many how many meals we're doing a day, but um I don't know how many fam- how many meals we're doing a day, but, um, there's still a lot of people that do not know they can go get those.
Yeah, there's been pretty regular communication from the principals about, uh, the meals. Uh, so certainly, I mean, we can talk offline, uh, figure out what the snag is there with that, uh, particular family, but we do want to make sure that they're able to access it. And I think the, both the during-the-day option and now the evening option, um, should make it much more accessible.
And, and Patrick, what I think is an issue is the countering, uh, uh, of, uh, that, the, the activity on Facebook about the quality of the food. I, I, I think that, obviously, when we say that we have food available for these people, i- 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 it meets guidelines, it's not gonna be bad, you know what I mean?
Uh, the video very clearly lays that out, uh, and Kevin can jump in here, but all of the meals are, are prepared fresh the day before. Uh, and one source of confusion, uh, we've come to find out, is the date on the food, which, uh, some people can, thought was the expiration date, it was actually the date that it was packaged. Um, so i- it is fresh, it meets all of the health guidelines, we've incorporated, uh, even as the video lays out. Uh, we, we're still offering the bagels from One Mighty Mill, fresh fruit and vegetables, um. I mean, we'll continue to solicit feedback, uh, from families on it, on the access, and certainly if there are concerns about the quality, we want to know about that. Uh, I think, uh, two weeks ago, there was a concern about, uh, the pasta, uh, and folks, uh, there was a concern about mold being in it. Uh, we immediately investigated that over the weekend, uh, with our food purveyor, and, and it come to determine that, uh, the pasta was discolored, uh, by the beans that were in it, uh, not a mold scenario. Uh, but, but, you know, again, we want to continue to solicit feedback and, um, you know, make sure that families are happy with the meals that they're receiving.
Dr. Totwiler, could I add something to that?
Please.
Go ahead, Kevin, and then Member Castellanos can, uh, ask a question.
Yes, and also, I think at the last meeting, we were also asked about doing the word out. I received an email, uh, today, as of ye- yesterday, uh, these are the following sites where we have flyers posted, Building Bridges, Greg House, First Baptist Church, Busy Bee, Halfaway School, City Hall, Police Station, Center Board, YMCA, My Brother's Table, the Library, the Post Office, the WIC office, the Boys and Girls Club of Lynn, uh, Bridge House, Amigos Market, Full Moon Market, Contras Market, Gomez Market, America's Food Basket. So, we continue to try to get those flyers posted in Spanish and English at all those locations, and we're still working to get more. And as, uh, the superintendent said, on the one, the box on Wednesdays will contain seven breakfasts and seven lunches, so it's a combination, so it's one big box, and that's one box per family, and anyone's welcome to go to those seven sites, pick those up.
And if there's any suggestions on other locations to put those flyers, uh, we can definitely let, uh, Dr. Totwiler and Kevin know as well, uh, and, and then any other suggestions on how we can continue to get that information out. Uh, Member Castellanos, then Member Capola. Um, I know Brian's been waiting.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Totwiler, and, uh, thank you, Kevin, for, you know, for just resolving those issues that, you know, came about the food distribution. Um, my first question is, uh, when we have, um, constituents who, you know, families that we're working with who want to solicit feedback, where exactly would you want us to pipeline that to?
Well, we're, we're, it, it's just like a multi-step process. Um, we're in the early stages of rolling out the parent accounts for, uh, Schoology, which will then become, our goal is to hit, again, one-hundred percent there. Uh, and, and our, I, the plan is to provide, uh, survey, to survey families through that mechanism to sure, to ensure that we're getting broad feedback. Um, I always welcome, uh, families to, to reach out to me directly, certainly their school principal. Uh, if it's an issue that's directly related to their school, I would start there. Um, y- you know, and, and, and it depends on what the issue is. I mean, if it's something related to the class, um, you know, their child's learning, uh, in, in a particular school or class, um, you always want to start at the building level. Uh, and if it's something broader base, if it's around food, uh, or, or something else, then I welcome them to reach out to me directly.
Okay, now I appreciate that, Dr. Totwiler. My next piece is, I haven't, I had, um, some families, um, that reached out, uh, around menu accuracy. Um, they've been trying to plan meals accordingly. I think they, 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 they brought up a fact that, um, one of their, their, their kids had an allergy, um, and one of the schools, um, displayed on the menu, one thing, and then when she went to go pick it up, it was something else. Um, and there was just, you know, some, uh, just for me, I needed some clarity on terms of how the menu is developed, if, if there's not, I, I guess, are, are we, we're generating for the month? Or how are we preparing those menus so we can have our families prepare for that? Especially when they come, if they're thinking they're gonna pick up a meatball sub, and all of a sudden they grab a tuna fish sandwich, you know, I just want to know how, because if there's allergies involved, I just want to know how that works.
Sure, I'll let Kevin speak to that, but I will say, just in terms of direct feedback in the video, um, they, there's actually a piece at the end where they ask for families to give feedback, and they give a phone number for them to do so. Um, and, you know, even issues around menu accuracy, um, food allergies, you know, if they have questions, uh, that number's there for them to call. But Kevin, I don't know, if you want to speak to the menu?
Yeah, the men- the menu's developed by the month, it's posted on the website, so that's part, I think that's also in the video too, you'll see that. Uh, actually, what I'll do is, I'll forward the, uh, video to, uh, uh, Mary Jewels tomorrow, and she can forward it out to the school committee members, so they can actually, uh, watch it as well. Uh, but the menu's done for the month, it's posted on the website. Uh, obviously, if, if something does run out, because we're still in a work in progress, uh, you know, we're not trying to, uh, you know, create too, too many meals and happen to not disperse them, but for the most part, uh, there should be, what's being served will be served. If they get the box lunch, the box lunches are the box lunch, so it's already prepared. If they're going to one of the secondary schools where they're preparing those meals that day, they, if they ever ran out of the meatball stubs because there was larger amount of people show up than they anticipated based on the volume, it could happen, and that's, uh, always been an issue, but we have to keep adjusting as the, uh, the best we can to the, the number of people that are attending every day.
Thanks, Kevin, and I just want to give a quick, um, uh, just a thank you to Mary Jewels again. Uh, while we're going through this, I, I really, really appreciate a lot of, uh, the help that she's been able to provide me with my constituents, and it's just really been very, a big team effort along, and my other colleagues in the district, everyone. Appreciate that, thank you.
Capola, thank you.
I, I just want to say, Kevin, you made the, um, comment that it's one box per family, but isn't it one box per child for that one week?
Yes, one box per, per child, so if you have three children, you get three.
They'd be picking up three boxes.
That's correct, that's absolutely correct. And, and if they do the ones day night, the box is one big box, it'll have, each box will have seven breakfasts, seven lunches, and, uh, juice or milk with each one, so they'll have a, they'll, they'll need some strong people to carry them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin, thank you, everyone.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is in a second.
And?
Is it second, roll call required?
You caught me up, guy. Is Casianas?
Yes.
Is Capola?
Yes.
Is Ford?
Yes.
Is Gately? Is Gately? Is Nicholson?
Yes.
Is Sadoway?
Yes.
Manigay?
Yes, and I see Lorraine Gately is trying to say yes on the Zoom, so she is. She is, she is, uh, recording, yes.
Yes.
Thank you all very much, have a good night, have a good, uh, weekend.